Today is May 24th, the time is 9:32. Call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We will have our invocation led by Councilor JT Moore and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilor Tanya Tate. If you'll please stand and join us in our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Father God, we just come before you today just thanking you for this day that we have. We thank you, Father God, for giving us another opportunity to be here and to do your will. God, we ask that you just continue to empower us to be good examples of your love, to be just people of integrity, Father God, and do exactly what it is that you have purpose us to do. Father God, we pray for safety over this city. You said in your word that a thousand may fall at our side, 10,000 at our right hand, but it will not come near us, Father God. We just speak healing in our city right now, Father God, because we know that people are hurting, and when people are hurting, they hurt people. So, Father God, we just thank you that you just lift them up, Father God. I thank you that you have, that we have skillful laborers out here, Father God, that are doing your will, and you said that you have given us the skillful tongue to encourage the weary. And so, Father God, I just thank you that we are able to speak words of encouragement, words of love, words of hope, words of inspiration to people to help them to move along the path that you've called them to move on. So, we just thank you, and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Good morning. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Present.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Pro Tem Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Council President Alexander.
Good morning. At this time, councilors, I would like to ask for a motion and second for approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of January 25th, 2022.
Some of.
Backing.
Vote is up.
All right, thank you. Those minutes passed from January 25th, 2022. Councilors, the minutes are not ready for February 1st through May 17th, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning to you, Madam President.
Good morning.
And to the entire council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ladies, good morning to the public. Madam President, we have a few presentations and a couple notes. What I'll try to do is get through these pretty fast as I can. As you know, today marks 44 days. Again, that's 44 days into the World Games. We'll come to our city and community for July 7th through the 17th, and so we want to encourage everybody to, if you have not yet purchased your tickets for the games you have an interest in, you can get more information, and more information is provided at birminghamal.gov/bhamready. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/bhamready for more information on the World Games. Madam President, as you know, and council, as you know, I think enough of us have spent time in our communities and our neighborhoods, whether it's outdoors or talking to residents, to see some of our seniors are in need, any form of exterior upkeep or upgrades that they need related to their porch or roof. We've had a program for many, many years now with CDBG funding related to seniors who are a certain age, certain financial qualifications, et cetera. The bottleneck or constraints we found is that we don't have enough contractors in the pipeline expedite the process for our residents to participate in that program. So, every year, we have an overwhelming amount of people that apply. Everybody doesn't necessarily qualify, but at the same time, we have some struggles because we don't have enough contractors in the pipeline. So, to that end, Community Development is hosting a Contractors Fair Thursday, this Thursday, May 26th, on the second floor of the Bowel Auditorium. I brought this to you, to the public, because I want you to promote this to any contractors you all know in our city, in our community, or in our area, because we want them to apply and participate in the RFP process to be a part of the Critical Repair Program so we can take care of more of our seniors and elders who qualify for this program. So, again, this fair, this Thursday, is seeking contractors and housing repair program managers for opportunities to support this. The program, the fair will be from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Again, that's on the second floor of the Bowel. Do me a favor, please spread the word about that to any contractors y'all know. We have a first of its kind in our city. The event has been existing for years. The HBCU Spring Coming kicks off in our community this Friday, May 27th, and it takes place all weekend. Again, this is the first of its time in our city, and there will be lots of HBCU representatives in our town for a number of events. Those events include Innovation Lab, Wine and Jazz Mixer, Comedy Show, Tour of the Historical Civil Rights District, and many more events. For more information, please share with your constituents in your districts to visit hbcuspringcoming.com. Again, that's hbcuspringcoming.com for more information. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Lindsay Harris, a praying to all of us to come up. If you did not know, this is Nurses Month, Registered Nurses, oh, and anybody you have with you as well, if anybody else is here with you. Has everybody come up, Madam President and Council? Registered nurses make up our nation's largest healthcare profession, and today we want to honor them. I'm always happy to have Ms. Dr. Harris stand before us. I think over the last few years, we've had a higher appreciation for the work our nurses do based on everything our world went through with the global health pandemic. Dr. Harris is the President of the Alabama State Nurses Association, and her colleagues who died today join us as we present this proclamation. I will not read it in whole, I'll read in part, and it states, "Whereas the Americans' Nurses Association, along with the Alabama State Nurses Association, has declared May as Nurses Month, and the theme this year is 'You Make a Difference.' With appreciation for nurses' unparalleled impact during the pandemic and their contributions to healthcare, and an open invitation to thank a nurse for enriching our lives, the world we live in, now therefore I, Randall L. Woodson, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, ask that all residents of this community join me in honoring the registered nurses who care for all of us, and take the time to celebrate their accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare systems, continue to save lives, and show our appreciation not only just this month, but as every opportunity presents itself throughout the year." And at this time, I would like Dr. Harris to present and share a few words.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woodson, and the distinguished council. On behalf of the Alabama State Nurses Association and all the nurses here in the state, we want to say thank you so much for this amazing, amazing recognition. There's one thing I can say. I can say that nurses have definitely earned their keep for the past two and a half years. Being on the front line, nurses are there from the beginning to the end, so we want to say thank you. Nurses across the state as well as across the country, we are the foundation of healthcare, and we understand with, when there's no healthcare, there's no economy. So, the recognition really means a lot to us as nurses, and we'd just like to thank you all again.
Thank you, Mayor Woodson, for bringing this recognition forward. I think all of us echo your sentiments in thanking this group of heroes that, as was stated, they persevered during the pandemic, and even before the pandemic. If you've ever been in a hospital or under the care, you know the importance of registered nurses and nurses to our healthcare and to our well-being, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Council. Madam President, at this time, and Council, I'm going to ask Dr. Parker Hugh to come forward, and anybody that is with him, please join Dr. Hugh as they approach Madam President and Council. This month is also Trauma Awareness Month, Trauma Awareness Month. I think traumatic injuries continue to be one of the leading causes of accidental death and injury in our country, and it's important that we continue to bring awareness to this issue. So, Dr. Hugh, Dr. Parker Hugh, that is, has brought a slew of folk on him, and we appreciate all the work they do, and we want to publicly acknowledge the work you all do at many hospitals in this area, and so thank you, but mainly to UAB for all the hard work that is being done in this area. So, Madam President and Council, again, I have a, I want to present a proclamation that reads only in part, not in full. Whereas Trauma Awareness Month, an initiative of the American Trauma Society, is a coming together of trauma professionals to raise awareness for injury and violence prevention and the difficulties that trauma survivors and their families face. Whereas many people devote their lives and careers to treating, caring for, supporting, and rehabilitating traumatic injury survivors, including those performing vital work in trauma research and development. This includes first responders, emergency medical teams, surgeons, surgeons, nurses, anesthesiologists, chaplains, speech occupational, and physical therapists, and injury prevention professionals, and some of all these good folk you see flanking me. Now therefore I, Randall L. Woodson, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Trauma Awareness Month, and I call upon all government agencies, fire, safety, and healthcare organizations, communications, media, and the people of Birmingham and this community to observe this week with the appropriate ceremonies and activities. And at this time, as Madam President and Council, I would like Dr. Hugh to come up and share a few words.
Thank you for the opportunity. I feel very fortunate to be here today, and we're, as trauma centers have been at, what I think many people are increasingly recognizing as one of the tier trauma centers here in the country. We have a gifted team of physicians and that are tirelessly helping to care of the injuries and saving them. And at UAB, we've been setting records lately, every year, increasing the number. Also really the problem, and why I feel very fortunate, raising the awareness of trauma upon our nation and our state. Trauma is the leading cause of preventable death, as well as the leading cause of death among young people. Patients are children, are too early. I would ask of this body and the people of Alabama and Birmingham in general, care for your loved ones, take care of yourselves, and try and help to put myself and our center out of business. My ultimate goal is no longer need to offer such injury care, but in the meantime, I
Thank you very much.
Two more, Madam President, and I'll get out of you all's way. But the next one is pretty important. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Michael Smith with Kelly Ingram, VFW, Post 668, as well as everyone with, Mr. Smith, to please approach the podium. Madam President and Council, as you know, this Monday, May 30th, we will commemorate the brave men and women in uniform who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. We have a proclamation in part to support all the sacrifices that have been made on our country. Whereas on May 30th, 2022, throughout our nation, Americans honor and remember in solemn gratitude the last full measure of love of country that could only be obtained through the ultimate sacrifice of our fallen protectors. We commemorate our fallen heroes on this 154th anniversary of Memorial Day, whereas more than 12,000 veterans of the United States Armed Forces reside in Birmingham. Whereas we shall continue to honor the families of our fallen warriors, the heartfelt sense of gratitude, say thank you. We will forever honor with a unified remembrance all those that sacrificed their lives for this city, the state, and this country. Now therefore I, Randall L. Woodson, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, request all residents of the City of Birmingham to pause and reflect in memory of the fallen heroes of our armed forces. At this time, Madam President and Council, I would like to ask Mr. Smith to please come up and share a few words.
Mr. Mayor. Madam President. We stand as three, this is parents of Marine Corps, Harvard High School, Afghanistan, and Korea. President Harris, Vice Commander, Special Guard Department, and he was supposed to go graduate from Huffman High School. I graduated from Huffman High School and was at Afghanistan and Canada. He three represented the 300-plus members of the BFW. 32-year-old hopes still in existence. City of Birmingham and its history with veterans is a little. Veterans Memorial Parkway, I drove in on this one. Union Field, named after the American Legion. The Birmingham Legion football, local club, named for the American Legion. The oldest combat veteran organization. Members of the city that served in our BFW post in the past, Mayor George Seals, Ray Williams, Ani Bokinkas, the only commander in chief of the Veterans Board of National. We represent an organization that wants to lift up people like Julius Elsberry, First Soldier, killed in action, Admiral Harlan, 19-year-old African American from current Birmingham. We see these things. We see he had some things on Memorial Day. It's not a recent, by all means, by an actor's poor heart. When a veteran sees people going to the beach on Memorial Day, we remember the beach of the broken island. For those in the mountains that go to the mountains, we remember those in North Korea. We see other activities, such as hearing music on Memorial Day. We remember the sounds of paths as we lay others to ground. We have people getting together for celebrations on Memorial Day, which is a bitter sweep on the, it's bitter because we remember the prices that had to be paid, but it's sweet because we remember those sacrifices allowed us, the fortunate, to have made it back. We remember those that were in that war, the election. But we need to do the most, and I agree with the mayor. We're not here asking for anything from the City of Birmingham. We've never asked anything from the city. 102 years we have supported the city, and we still do. Three blocks away, on 11th and 18th. 102 years we're still doing. What we ask is only to allow us to continue to support veterans, veterans' families, and citizens of Birmingham. Be side by side. Ask you to remember, and I have to say it, in the ultimate words of Crosby, Stills, and Action, you know, remember the price of freedom.
Thank you very much.
One last note. At this time, I would like to ask Charlie Williams and Katar Vance to join me this morning. This is special for me, and I hope you can appreciate what I'm about to share. Today, what I want to do is honor a young hero in our community, a young man. Tell all of us a lesson, that's a deal. Name is Nathaniel Henderson Jr., affectionately known as Biggie. So, what I want to do today is officially declare today Nathaniel Biggie Henderson Jr. Day. In explaining myself and taking the time to honor this young man, these are a couple of his family members who will come up and speak with a little bit more intimacy of who this hero is. City of Birmingham would like to pause and recognize him. He's the son of Cynthia Nathaniel Henderson Sr. of Huffman. Pausing to acknowledge his strength incurred. Got a proclamation I'll read in part, and it states, "Whereas lovingly referred to as Biggie, Nathaniel enjoyed spending time with loved ones, listening to music, and traveling. Was born two and a half months early with CLOF syndrome, but he has not let his condition define him, and whereas since his diagnosis, he has had more than 10 surgeries, touching the hearts of everyone who learns about him. He's an honorary member of the men's basketball team at Sanford University. He has also participated in special events at the Lakeshore Foundation, whereas he will turn 16 on May 26th, 2022, but his wisdom far exceeds his age. He visits the doctor, he gives fellow patients the energy and the will to take one more step, even when they don't feel like it. Selflessness drives many towards a brighter day, and the way he shows empathy and compassion for others shows his true heart. My favorite part is a motivator, visionary, and at 16, a leader." Now therefore I, Randall L. Woodson, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby issue this proclamation to proclaim, today, actually on his birthday, May 26th, as Nathaniel Biggie Henderson Jr. Day, and encourage the residents of Birmingham, Alabama, to rise to the occasion and salute the impact he has had on his family and the Magic City. And at this time, I would like either one of his family members to come up and share a few words.
Good morning.
Councilmembers and the City of Birmingham. My name is Katar Vance. I'm the sister of Nathaniel Biggie Henderson, and his strength is a strength that I did not know existed. As Mayor Woodson said, he will be turning 16 on Thursday. However, it was times we didn't think he'll make it to see 16, especially when he was born, and at four months, they told us he wasn't there yet. Him to be turning 16 on Thursday? Tell me my God ain't faithful. You can't tell me my God isn't a real one. I knew my brother was a strong individual back in 2014. One of his surgeries he had was a leg amputation from the right knee down, and so, of course, I was a nervous wreck because the surgery was in Boston, because that's where all his major surgeries are held. And when my mom called me, she FaceTimed me, and she FaceTimed me, and he was up walking the same day he just had a leg amputation. That then told me that if this little boy was at the time, what, 2014, eight years old at the time, so if he at that time of eight years old could get up after a leg amputation and walk, there should be no reason why I could complain about anything in this room. So, by y'all granting this proclamation of declaring May 26th his birthday as National, Nathaniel Biggie Henderson Jr. Day, my family thanks you. We appreciate you from the bottom of our hearts. Don't have any words to express the gratitude we have for you all, so we thank you, we thank you, we thank you.
Very quickly. Understanding CLOF, the CLOF syndrome, every day is a bonus. Every day is a bonus. Birthday party two weeks ago, for our, our Woodring. Mayor Woodson took the time to make a video that was presented at his birthday party. All that video, all of this building, all the joy, all of our kids, all of our kids that roam, they will touch because of you. Estimate to what we should all be pursuing, all you, this, all of you, but especially We weren't sure if we could do that. I'm sure that birthday party and feeling that special energized, and we think thirsty, we'll all still be better. Madam President and Council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Pro Mayor Woodson, this morning. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate all of this recognition this morning, and thank everyone. At this time, councilors, I would like to ask for suspension of the rules and allow us to go ahead and have our presentations this morning. There's no objection, I'd like to go ahead and do that. All right, thank you. At this time, we do have two presentations for our council meeting this morning, and the first, I'm very honored to present for presentation from District 7 at the Hesitate Birmingham, the Community First Birmingham Southwest Alliance Association, and they're represented here, we have their representatives here this morning. If they will come forward, we want to talk about and honor them for their 2022 fantastic voyage, the execution and success of this annual event, and we do have a of this annual event. And we do have a brief video. Uh, we did have a snippet of the video from a previous, um, event. And so we'd like to just show a few minutes of that as they
We're doing our second annual Get on the Bus mentoring tour. We have about a hundred and thirty-five kids that were traveling from Birmingham Police Headquarters to Selma, Alabama, to retrace the steps of the civil life group. This is important because we need our children from the Birmingham area to understand and know the history of themselves and the history of Alabama.
Wives get on the bus important to the community. First off, it's a way for us to reconnect with our youth and show them a little bit of our history, where they come from, show them our past, let them see a glimpse of their future, know that everything is possible if they just believe it and trust in themselves and trust in God.
Of course, this isn't, isn't all of the video, but we just wanted to give you just a snippet of what this tour, what this, I want to call it like a pilgrimage or a voyage means. So, Mr. Wilson, I'm going to allow you to go ahead and you and Abdul to introduce , uh, the rest of your team. And I hope you all know this is our District Seven Board Representative, Mr. Walt Wilson.
Good morning, uh, President, Madam Pro Tem, and members of the city council, as well as the mayor and his wonderful staff. Now, I always compliment the mayor's wonderful staff because I, as I look to my left, as a Birmingham city employee, I see bosses. So I want you to know how great my bosses are. They're wonderful. But, uh, we come to you this morning, uh, to share with you just a little bit of our fantastic voyage. It's something that Brother Abdul came up with years ago. And for those of you who have ever seen the movie Get on the Bus, Mike Lee, this is what we tried to emulate about five years ago. The video you saw, we were supposed to present to this, to the city council in two thousand nineteen, but COVID prevented it. So Abdul's going to share with you just a little bit of his vision, Pamela Baz, who's coordinator for Community First, and Mark Shaw, who is president of the Hillman East Brownville Improvement Association.
Morning, everyone. I would say the vision of the Fantastic Voyage was really just to take mentoring, a different approach to mentoring, whereas we realize that environment makes a difference as it relates to development. So we wanted to take those children out of their environments and take them on the road and give them exposure to different ideas and different historic monuments and meet different people while being on the road. The trip, uh, the destination is just a, a portion of the whole thing. It's the mentoring that take place on the bus, where we have multiple five oh one C three and mentoring programs on the bus establishing a common goal and a certain curriculum where we can speak one band, one sound. If all of these guys are mentoring programs that are out there on the same page, then maybe we can be more effective as it relates to educating our youth. So this is the opportunity or this platform facilitates that. And it, it facilitates the idea of, um, that there are so much more than what you see every day. And it takes exposure to realize that, but it's very impactful when you take them out of there and they looking around on the road, uh, when the City of Birmingham Police Forces also escorting and making sure they're secure. They can actually focus on learning as opposed to being in an environment that's very stressful sometimes and not conducive for growth. This given that opportunity, and I appreciate it. I'm thankful for all of you.
Thank you.
Piggyback off of what he said. Um, one thing that we found that, and gentlemen, I always stress this, how can a man determine where his, uh, his, uh, came from? So, a lot of times, we are talking to the kids on our, on our general, you know, what we came up on, but they are faced with so much more than what we were faced with. So on this tour, they had an opportunity with no judgment to talk to us. Often time, we telling them what they need to do, how they need to do it, but we still thinking back to how we came up with Big Mama. But they didn't, they don't, they're not privileged to the Big Mamas. Like they said, the Big Mamas can't sit on the porch anymore. Mamas can't just go to the store. You can't just send your kids out the door and think that they're okay. Or the neighbors just can't talk to this child because they have to be careful who, you know. So, and we give them the opportunity to tell us what can we do? You know, how can we help y'all? Where are we failing? Because, just because we're the adults, that don't mean that we're perfect. So this opportunity is for both. But everything that we got going on in the community takes all of us, and that village is everybody, and that's including the children.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this, uh, I would like to piggyback off these, uh, my colleagues here and add to the fact that this, uh, this, this adventure, this voyage, uh, is established a foundation. Whereas, uh, if you know that, if you have a foundation, for example, uh, if you, if you had a family, if you have a deep, strong family root that you acted a certain way that I'm, for example, I am a Winchester, we don't do this, or whatever, something like that, uh, this, this voyage established, helped establish a foundation, because if you don't have a foundation, you don't have nothing to stand on and to, and to grow for. So when we established that foundation with this, uh, with this voyage, uh, we established, we were able to accomplish things such as growth outside of, learning outside of the classroom, and the ability to teach and instruct conflict resolution, which they've learned as well. And as Brother Abdul said, once we took them out of that element, uh, out of that element of, uh, difficulty, and they were able to travel and to see around different things, then the learning started progressing. And you saw, and you saw in their faces a ooze in the eyes. And so they were, so we're very proud to, uh, present that. And we'd like to thank you all, uh, for helping us, uh, achieve that.
Uh, Ms. Baz has T-shirts that we want to share with each of you. You all already have them. Uh, we started off calling this Get on the Bus, but we changed the name to the Fantastic Voyage Through History. In my brief ending, I want to share this with you. Lot of children, counselor, who were middle school and high school did not know who Emmett Till was, hadn't heard of him. I think we as a community have a moral obligation to teach the history of those who come before us to our children. I concur with what my colleague said. Anyone who does not know their past, they are doomed to repeat it. And closely, um, this was a wonderful trip. Um, I want to thank so many who helped us raise the money to do it. I want you guys to know that Big Walt cooks the best ribs in all of Jefferson County. We had a rib cook-off between myself and District Attorney Danny Carr. I whipped him. And I'm sticking to that story. But all proceeds that were raised went to paying for the buses, making sure that it didn't cost the children anything. And the participation from our elementary, middle school, and high school kids in southwest Birmingham was amazing. So again, counselor, thank you so much for your consistent commitment to our children. Thank you to the mayor's office. The mayor's not in here, but I'm going to thank him anyway, because when it comes to our children, I can't think of one thing that we've requested from the mayor that he has not provided for us. So thank you all for that. Thank you for believing in us, and we hope that we can continue this partnership, trying to make a difference in our community, one child at a time. Thank you.
No, the thanks goes to you. Thank you all. When we talk, when we talk about our children and our youth, and I, I just can't say it enough, and I have to echo what you said, you have to know where you've been to know where you need to go. And so when we hear that our children don't know some of the, um, you know, the biggest and most important events that, uh, surround us as a people and as a nation, then our children need to know those events. And it may help them with choices that they may, may make later and down the road. So it is my pleasure to be able to support you because you bring this out of southwest Birmingham, where I feel our children are most needed to have that information. So I thank you, and I'm very appreciative of you, as I think most of our councilors are, uh, equally supportive. So thank you so much. At this time, councilors, we do have one more presentation, and this is being made by Counselor Clinton Woods of District One, and this is recognition of scholastic achievement.
Really have a good opportunity, uh, today to, to recognize Mr. Benson on, uh, his achievements. He's going to be going to Harvard.
Oh, wow.
Scholarship. And so we wanted to, uh, recognize him. Also wanted to, uh, recognize Mr. Thomas, uh, Mr. Carl Thomas for, uh, really, we just heard a lot about the importance of, uh, spending time with youth and mentorship. He's been someone in Mr. Benson's life just to kind of, uh, help out, pitch in, give wisdom, share advice as needed. And so you can really see the impact that you can have. And we want to take this moment, just encourage people, the young people that are in your orbit, the, uh, people that you contact with. Take some time, you know, share what you know. Uh, as I, uh, get older, a lot older than, uh, as I get older, I realize that, you know, there's a lot you didn't know to , to, to, to share that information and wisdom with them. And I want to read a little bit, uh, from the resolution, just to give you, uh, a little bit of what he's accomplished so far. So whereas it is a consensus of this legislative body to recognize the outstanding accomplishments and education displayed by the youth in this great city, Kylan Amari Benson, through his diligence and dedication to his education, has received the prestigious honor of being accepted at eighteen colleges and being awarded more than three million dollars in scholarships. He will be attending the Ivy League Harvard University on full scholarship in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. Kylan's accomplishments are reflective of a dedicated effort to achieving academic success at a high level. And whereas Kylan is the twenty-twenty-two valedictorian at Ramsey High School, he is scheduled to graduate in June twenty-two in the inter, International Baccalaureate Program at Ramsey High School Engineering Academy. Kylan achieved a GPA of four point five, ranked number one of two hundred and ten in his class, had an ACT score of thirty-one. Uh, his many other achievements include class president, co-captain of Speak First Debate Team, editor-in-chief of the school yearbook, uh, National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society, College Choice Foundation Scholar, and I guess we'll throw in the A honor roll as well. So I will, uh, pause and, and, and let, uh, Pro Tem Smitherman say a few words, and then we'll, uh, hear from Mr. Benson himself.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Woods. Uh, councilors, you may recognize Mr. Benson because he is the president of the Government Club at Ramsey High School. So it's really see, it's really good to see a very productive student, um, not only being involved in the political field, but also in the academic field. As a proud alum, I'm so proud of you. Um, I said this last week, I think a lot of times, we hear a lot more about the negative about our Birmingham state schools and not enough about the positive. So I'm really proud of you. Um, I know you'll get honored tomorrow, so I'll be cheering for you then, and I'll be cheering for your graduation next week. Congratulations.
Good morning to the council, to the mayor, and to the public. Um, and special thanks to Counselor Smitherman and Counselor Woods for, um, having me today. Um, it's just been a wonderful, um, opportunity to be blessed with such great opportunity in terms of educational achievement, in terms of being accepted into different, um, colleges and being awarded, um, millions of dollars in scholarships. And so I'm just thankful to God first and foremost, and also to my family, because without, um, my family, I really wouldn't be able to be here today. And I also have to thank, um, Mr. Carl Thomas and Ms. Josephine Lowry, who are part of the College Choice Foundation, and they have been instrumental in helping guided me through the college process. Because at the start of the process, I thought I knew what I needed to know about college admissions, but I really didn't. And so having their help and their support has really changed my trajectory in terms of like the, the colleges that I looked at. And, um, I would just have to say, um, if there are any students, um, watching this, um, to always remember that education opens so many doors, and it really is the key to life. Um, keep a positive character and always, um, be true to yourself. And if you do that and remember, um, your goals in life, then you'll succeed in anything that you do. And so, once again, I would just like to thank everyone for recognizing me today, and I'm very honored to be here.
Hello, everybody. I'm Josephine Lowry, as Kylan mentioned. I'm the executive director and co-founder of College Choice Foundation. I won't take up much of your time. I just wanted to let you know, we are a nonprofit that started about eight years ago to help, we help every high school in the City of Birmingham and home at high school. Currently, we start, well, we started with one student. We now have a hundred and two students. And we don't just help them get into college in a college that is their best fit, that they can afford, because we really don't want these kids coming out with much debt, if any debt. And, you know, kudos to Kylan, because he's going to graduate from Harvard with a, I guess, about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar education, having borrowed no money. But we don't want to just drop them at the doors of these schools. They need assistance once they get to college. It's just not enough to get them there. So our foundation continues to support them until they graduate from graduate school as much as we can. We don't have a lot of money, but what we can do, we do. So we are excited. We, we couldn't be more thrilled about Kylan's acceptance to Harvard. And, and this kid is a tough one. He didn't want to go visit. He refused to go. He said, I'm not going to visit Harvard. I'm going to Georgetown. And I said, oh, yeah, you are. And so, uh, we paid for that, helped him get there. And halfway through that visit, he's like, yeah, I think I'm going to Harvard now. So I'm going to let, um, his mentor, who really is the, the reason behind Kylan's success, after Kylan's own success, um, speak a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, uh, council members, and, uh, I want this opportunity to be placed. Um, I met, uh, Kylan back in July as a mentor. And, um, I told Kylan, I said, you know, we're about to embark and navigate through a rigorous process, and you're going to have to dedicate some time and effort into this process. And without a blink, uh, he said, yes, sir. I read it. I said, I'd like you to commit to me one hour of the week. And, uh, you choose the date and you choose the time. Promptly at six o'clock on Monday, since July first, Kylan has ringed my phone, and he has engaged in that process. And as we spoke about it, it is a marathon, and it's appropriate that that marathon ended up in Boston. Somebody kissed the plug. Uh, but, uh, he has really been dedicated to the cause, and, um, he has a very supportive family behind him, and I like to recognize that. Uh, and the program itself helped to, uh, enhance his opportunities and for him, uh, just those places that he was familiar. So happy for him that he has accomplished a great deal, and also happy that, uh, Birmingham City Schools is proving excellent, students and scholars like Kylan Benson. So thank you so, so much for recognizing him, and we appreciate it all. Thank you.
Are there any councilors that would like to speak? Counsel Clay?
Congratulations. Um, have just one piece of advice for you. Um, you need to find you a good pair of rubber boots. It's a mandatory, um, requirement in Boston. And, you know, they've got plenty of slush and snow in the wintertime, so that's, that's all I got for you, man.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I just want to say congratulations, just a really hearty congratulations. Very proud of you. And go Rams. I'm a Ramsey alum as well. So thanks for upholding the legacy.
Yes. Counsel Moore?
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations. Um, remember this moment. Remember this moment. Um, I know a lot of times, you know, you're, you're grinding, you're working, and, you know, uh, you get to a place where you can have a chance to you get to a place where you can have a chance to breathe and look back on your accomplishments, but I think that what you're doing right now, you're going to be able to look back on it and use this experience to encourage somebody else that's coming up as well. So remember this feeling, because you're going to be able to speak to young people in the future that have the same feeling.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Are there any other councilors?
Well, like I said, we're so proud of you. I just ask of one thing, similar to what Councilor Moore said, make sure you reach back and help other kids that are still in the Birmingham City Schools. And if you have the opportunity, come back and serve your city. I think a lot of times, we're not as welcoming to youth, but come back and take your talents and your skills, even for a little bit, and help move the city forward. So congratulations again.
Ma'am, thank you. I'm going to be majoring, going to be majoring in government, so we'll see where that takes me.
Oh, yeah, come back and do an internship with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Woods. Wait, Councilor Woods.
Excuse me, I just wanted to move the--
Oh, yes, we need to move the resolution.
Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Some move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, councilors. At this time, we will go back to our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the items for consideration for consent.
Yes, ma'am. Our first item on the consent agenda, item number eight on page four. Please note that item number seven has been requested to be withdrawn. So we're going to start with item number eight on page four. Item nine, on item number nine, on the fourth line down, the word is going to change from will lease to will license. So it'll say under which H A B D will license to the city instead of lease. Page five, we have items 10, 11, 12, and 13. On page six, we have items 14, 15, 16, and 17. On page seven, we have items 18, 19, 20, and 21. On page eight, we have items 22, 23, 24, 25. On page nine, we have items 26, 27, 28, 29. Page 10, we have items 30, 31, 32, and 33. Page 11, items 34, 35, 36, and 37. Page 12, we have items 38, 39, 40, and 41. That completes the consent agenda, and please note that we do have an addendum item.
Thank you very much. At this council, at this time, councilors, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from consent? Councilor Quinn?
Yes, first off, on page six, I just want to point out that on item 16, there appears to be a typo with the address. It just says 5605 Avenue North. And then on page, starting on page eight with number 25, I'd like to remove the following items from consent. Item number 25 on page eight. Items on page nine, items 26 through 29. On page 10, items 30 through 32. And page 11, item 34.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn. Any other items? Councilor Clark?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to add number 42 to the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, there's a request to add item 42, which one, our addendum item to consent.
Counselor, if you would, because it's setting a public--
That's correct, that's correct, that's correct, that's correct, sorry.
I can read it if you want to add it to consent, so that it'll be no, the public will know.
Go ahead, please.
Item number 42 is a resolution to rescind, resolution number 947-22, which was adopted by the council May 17, 2022, and to adopt a new resolution setting a public hearing on June 21, 2022 for zoning case number ZAC 2022-00003, to change zoning district boundaries from D3 single-family district to D4 medium-density residential district, filed by Joseph Miller, applicant representing the owner, Antonio Spurling, of the Enslie Revitalization Committee for property located at 2727 Seventeenth Street, situated southeast, on the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 17 South, Range 3 West, Birmingham. This correct a clerical error in the hearing date set forth in the zoning notice and the synopsis of zoning notice. Portions of the resolution, there being, there being an inconsistency in the dates provided in those portions as adopted on May 17, 2022. Essentially, the date was, one of the dates were incorrect on the original resolution, on May 17, and we're correcting that.
All right, so by reading this now, we can add that to consent, correct? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. So we're adding item 42. Any other items that you'd like to add or remove, councilors? I don't see any requests. I do just want to clarify, item number seven on page four, that's already been removed from consideration, correct? From the agenda?
That number, give me a minute.
Item number seven on page four.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
And I'm going to find the address for the counselor about the item number 16. Actually, on the resolution, it also says 5605 Avenue, it may be Avenue Inn instead of Avenue North.
Can we verify that before we vote, or do we just think--
Yeah, I think so, because it says the location is in Central Park.
Okay.
And that's, that would be Avenue Inn.
Councilors, is it okay if we just make that correction, and that'll be 5605 Avenue Inn? Thank you very much. We'll leave that on consent. Before we call for a motion and the vote, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, and those indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, can I entertain a motion and a second for the consent agenda?
I love approval.
Second.
No further questions, we'll call for the vote.
Second, I'm sorry, I missed it. I gave the second for the motion.
Councilor Pro Tem?
Vote is started.
Mine isn't up, but I--
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All right, thank you, councilors. Those items are approved for consent. If you are here for any item that has been approved for consent, that item is approved, and we wish you a good day. And now we'll continue with the rest of our council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you'll call up the first item?
First item is on page two. It is item number one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2022-00002, to change zone district boundaries from MXD Planned Mixed Use District to QI1 Qualified Light Manufacturing District, filed by Whit Mitchell of Weight Point Investments LLC for property located at 801 Tom Martin Drive and situated in the northeast quarter of Section 33, Township 18, South Range, 3 West, Birmingham. And this is the hearing of our interested parties.
Thank you, councilors. Do we have a motion?
Some move, second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gambrell. This public hearing will be conducted by our Chair of Planning and Zoning, Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gambrell, you're already here to read our case, so thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Tim Gambrell, I serve as Chief Planner for the city of Birmingham. And this is case ZAC 2022-2 in the Oxmoor neighborhood. The proposed use is a Class A climate-controlled storage, mini-storage facility. The subject property sits on approximately 13.73 acres of land. Currently zoned MXD, abutting the subject property to the north. Is southern research engineering, zoned MXD. To the south of the site is advanced technology recycling, zoned I1. To the west is an office building zoned MXD. To the east is the avenues of Lake Shore, an apartment complex, also zoned MXD. The applicant's proposal is to repurpose the existing 91,000-square-foot office building in the climate-controlled storage. The site will also include 166 new fully enclosed storage units for boats and recreational vehicles, as well as a wash bay. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as light manufacturing. This district is designed to allow for light manufacturing, office uses potentially in business park settings, typically near major transportation routes, including interstate, state highway, railroad spurs, airport facilities. Uses in the districts include warehouse and distribution uses, urban agriculture supporting uses such as minor retail services to support the major use. The zoning ordinance in mini-storage warehouses permitted in the I1, subject to the following conditions. Individual units are used for storage of property, and no manufacturing or industrial activities occur, or conducted in the units. No storage of highly combustible, flammable, or explosive products or materials is allowed. The applicant's proposed site plan shows 49 parking spaces. The parking requirement for warehousing is one space per 2,000 gross floor area, and then one space per 400 square feet of office area. Therefore, the total number of parking spaces required is 49. The applicant's proposed site plan shows a total of 49 parks. The Oxmoor Neighborhood Association met at a regular scheduled meeting on February 14, 2022, to review the proposed, review the proposed project and voted not to recommend the proposed rezoning request, the proposed rezoning request. The vote was 12 approved and 18 to deny. The applicant's rezoning request is consistent with the future land use plan. There are some Q conditions associated with this case. The first one is compliance with all requirements in the Oxmoor Steering Committee guidelines. And then there's a series of uses listed that are allowed. So other uses would not be permitted that are allowed in the I1 district. Only these uses would be allowed that are listed here, there's, you know, several, a few dozen. Planning Commission, the Birmingham Planning Commission met at its regular scheduled meeting on April 6, 2022, to review, review the proposed project and voted to recommend the proposed rezoning request. The Planning and Zoning Committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on April 13, 2022, and voted to send the request to the city council with no recommendation. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. This is a public hearing. If the applicants, which I know you're here, will please come up and if you have anything to add to what Mr. Gambrell has told us, or you have any drawings, or pictures, or maps, or whatever you may have to show us. And please keep in mind that our microphone is challenged, and so you have to talk pretty close to it for people to be able to hear clearly.
Okay. Would you all like us to have the board's face, the audience, for you guys?
Well, we're the ones that are going to vote, so.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Whit Mitchell, this is Will Forbes. We're the owners of New Latitude Moving and Storage. New Latitude is a moving and storage company that's been serving the Birmingham market for over 20 years. Our business has been a resident of District 7 and Oxmoor Neighborhood since 2017. That location on Industrial Drive is our primary office, and we have almost 40 employees that report to that office. As Tim mentioned, the reason for our rezoning request is to repurpose the old IRS property into a Class A storage facility. And we do feel like this storage request is a unique one, and that unlike a passive investor in a storage development, our moving company will be tethered to the facility. In fact, we've been out of space at our Industrial Drive warehouse, out of storage space since 2018. So when we have customers request storage through us, we've been taking those customers to other storage facilities around the Birmingham market. We're excited about the opportunity to repurpose this building, this property, and have an attractive facility that we can bring our customers to. I want to provide a little bit of history on building of the property. It was built in 1994 specifically for the IRS, who has been its sole tenant until 2018. Since the IRS moved out in 2018, that property has been vacant. Over two years, the property was marketed for lease, for sale, and was even taken to a national auction platform, where there were thousands of viewers who had the opportunity to see this property. No transaction was consummated during that marketing process. And in fact, we're the only potential buyers who have had this property under contract in the last two years. We truly believe that our project is in outstanding use for the property and the neighborhood, and we have some reasons why. The first is, we've heard concern from the neighborhood about traffic in the Oxmoor area, and particularly in this area. Repurposing this property from an office building to a storage facility will decrease traffic by approximately 80% in comparison to its previous use as an office building. Second, the project will stabilize building and property that's been vacant around four years. Third is, as Tim mentioned, city planning staff states that the rezoning request has merit for approval and is consistent with the end use. In addition to the city's long-range land use plan, which our proposal is congruent with, the current neighboring properties and businesses are largely industrial. That's except for Tower Homes subdivision that's being built adjacent to the property, who's come and spoken and approved in support of our project in previous meetings. Next is, there's a definite need for storage in the area. As we mentioned previously, we've been taking our customers who've requested storage to storage facilities elsewhere in Birmingham. But in addition to that, we ordered a thorough, it's a 59-page feasibility study on the property to analyze both the market and the demand in the area, among other factors. That study found that competitor storage facilities in a three-mile radius are sitting at an estimated 96% occupancy. So while there are storage facilities in, in a three-mile ring, there's virtually no space available, no storage space available for customers. Further, this 96% occupancy can be compared to the relative office occupancy of the Oxmoor market. The current average occupancy, office occupancy of the Oxmoor market is 68%. That's a number that's been declining since 2014. 2014, the office occupancy was 85%. We think that this data demonstrates that, that there's a greater need for storage than office, especially at this site. Finally, we've made efforts to understand and address the voice of concerns of the neighborhood, and we want to be able to-- neighborhood, and we want to be a part of this neighborhood for years to come. We truly care. Some of those concerns, I'm not sure if that packet was distributed to you guys for your review, but some of the concerns were easy to address. There was concern about there being onsite fuel storage at the facility. There will be no onsite fuel storage. There was concern about a waste dump station, which... Previously, there was, in our first iteration, there was going to be a waste dump station after hearing the concern of the community. That's since been removed. There will be no waste dump station at the facility. However, we realize we won't be able to address all of the concerns of the neighborhood. For example, we heard neighborhood members mentioned that an alternative non-commercial use would be better for the neighborhood. Several neighborhood members mentioned the city purchasing the property to turn it into a library, school, or community center. Obviously, we won't be able to address this particular concern. But we have made and will make efforts to address all the concerns that we can that the neighborhood has. In closing, we've enjoyed being a business resident of the Oxmoor Neighborhood in District 7, and we want to be here for years and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If y'all would just have a seat on the front row in case we have any questions after we hear from members of the public. This is a public hearing, and we want to hear from residents or other business members who may want to speak. So if there are people who wish to speak to this item, if you would queue up over here on this side so that we can efficiently hear from everyone. Each speaker should introduce him or herself, give your address, and you will have three minutes to express your opinions. So if the first speaker would come forward, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Clint Johnston. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Tower Homes. And we love the Oxmoor area. We love, we enjoy being a corporate citizen of the city of Birmingham. Our company has built approximately 455 homes in the Oxmoor area. We currently own homes in the Oxmoor area, so we are highly vested in this area and love being a part of it. We are currently building a community adjacent to this property. We are building 41 homes in the Oxmoor Grove Community on Tom Martin Drive. And so, once again, we have a heavy vested interest in the property values to the property that we are building. And so, in light of this, we would like to vote or express our support of this project. We do feel it is the highest and best use that is on the table currently for the property. Like I said, we have 41 homes and about 15 million reasons to be concerned about the property values. But even in light of that, we do feel that this is the best use of the property that is currently proposed, and we are in full support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. We appreciate your comments, and we will let everyone speak, and then we will ask our questions of individual members if we have them. Thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker? Anyone will do. Please keep in mind our microphone, so adjust it appropriately.
First giving God all the praise and honor for even being here alive today, and before you all, City Councilors. Good morning. Amy is Madeline Green. I'm the president of Oxmoor Neighborhood Association, here today with members from Neighbors, Neighborhood, whatever one's there. I would like to, first of all, have these packets. The order of the packet has changed this morning. It was a spirit that was in me. It was going to follow the order that you did, but I changed it, and here we go. Sorry, it will not change until they'll see. When New Latitude called me, I told him it was a no for me. I asked if he wanted, if he would want a storage in his neighborhood. He said yes, if there aren't too many already. Well, there are. Councilors, please turn to pages 25 and 27, towards the back. According to the area map, there are more, more storage units that we need, as you can see. One of those pictures I recently, I took on yesterday, and it was a great picture. It's a brand new facility. It is not 96, 97% of fuel. And it's across from, it's right there at Lowe's, down the street from us. We also have a facility that's located in walking distance off of Weenona Oxmoor Road. No matter how big or small, or whether the bricks are gold, or the doors are dripping with diamonds, it's a storage facility. In preparation for the Planning and Zoning Committee, we never received notification of the public hearing. And what the results were upon viewing, didn't know the results until we were notified that this meeting had taken place, so we had no representation there. We could have been there, we were waiting to go, but nevertheless, I thank Councilman Woods, Councilman Tate, Councilman Abbott, Councilors, for your vote of sending it to full council and no representation, because we were not represented there. New Latitude was represented, and I was wondering, how is it that they were there and we were not notified? There's a picture of the storage facility, gas station, car wash, and Avenue Apartments. This is something that... They put their report to you all as going the opposite way of our subdivisions. It went towards this area right here. And if you can see in your packets for them, they have the same pictures, these are the same pictures I have. I have the same pictures for my presentation. So at the bottom of page three, going in the opposite direction from Tom Martin... Okay, that's just a part of that, going to page three. In those areas, right there where I was talking about, the gas station and the storage facility, and the car wash, and apartments, there's a very grass amount of congestion there. On page four, the developer for the homes being built next to the property on Tom Martin spoke favorably at the Planning and Commission meeting about the rezoning. But at the end of the day, he's not putting nothing. He's not gonna be out there. Once those houses are built, he's gone. There is some history with the building. On pages five and seven, there was continuous meetings and mentioning of T-Mobile, Eponics, and the research company off of Weenona and Oxmoor Road and Tom Martin. We did not have any input in those locations of those... You have to see this facility if it's approved every single day.
Ms. Green, your three minutes is up, so you need to wrap up your comments.
Okay, I will. Okay. At the bottom of 23, page just 24, we have United Ability Hand in Hand Fire Station just adjacent to City Drive, which is at the end of Weenona Oxmoor Road. Okay. End of the day, this facility is just a facility that stores items, boats, and RVs. Are we catering to U.S. Steel? We are going to tear down houses, tear down trees along the corridor. Let it be beautiful development. Urban sprawl has been correlated with increased energy use, pollution, and traffic congestion, and a decline in community distinctness and cohesiveness. This is something that we don't want. So please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next speaker?
I am the mayor, the president. My name is Larry Wood. I reside at 101 Trans Blueport, Birmingham, which is in Oxmoor Valley.
Can you raise the microphone so that it's pointing at you?
There you go.
That'll help. Thank you.
I oppose this project simply because we are, what we call it, Oxmoor Road. We are ordered by Lake Shore and Shannon Oxmoor Road. Off the Lake Shore, you got Oxmoor Industrial Park. That's where all the industry's warehouses are. Okay, Shannon Oxmoor Road, you got Circuit Cave Service Station, you got a car wash, you got the Avenue Apartments. And just past Avenue Apartment, you got Shades Creek Industrial Park, which consists of mattress warehouse, ATD tire distributors, U.S. Rast Construction. It's all industrial back there. But we are in the center. They want to come right in the center in our neighborhood and change the zone into light industrial when we are surrounded by all this industrial. And another thing about, they are in the moving storage and seem to be warehousing building, business, warehousing business, because all of these new buildings that own their diagram now that they're planning on constructing, they're 16 feet high. So what are you planning putting 16 feet high? Most many storage units have little units that you could get, maybe a five by eight, a 10 by 12. Their smallest unit is 25 by 14. You can get two vehicles, a dead stack, two more on top of it there. That's the smallest that I see on there. Now, we oppose this project because it's not a good fit for our neighborhood, especially being just beyond our sign that says Oxmoor Neighborhood. That's the first building you see is the former IRS building. And for them to turn into a storage facility, which is basically not storage, it's gonna be warehousing, and you will have to have some way to fill that 16 feet height up there. So that means you're gonna need some kind of machine, a forklift or something. If you gonna have a forklift on the property, that means you need some type of fuel, whether it be gasoline, diesel, or propane to run forklift. And housing other RVs, they say no hazardous material. Well, you got propane tanks on RVs that are used to run the stoves and to run the grills. Those are hazardous materials. So I would ask that you all consider this and vote no on this, because it's not a great fit for our neighborhood, and it won't benefit any of the neighbors for our storage, because I don't think anybody needs a storage unit that big unless they're planning on putting that whole contents of their house in it, and that's the smallest.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? And if people have gotten tired of standing, just have a seat and jump up real quick and come talk to us, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor, Council. I'm Gary Bruce Lavender, and I reside at 105 Pretoria Circle with my wife. I am here, as you all know that, I'm strongly opposed to this project of people moving in, building houses, and at this particular time, they're building houses right next to this project. Weenona Oxmoor Road runs into West Oxmoor Road. We have Oxmoor Valley sitting on Sydney, that's down, that's running from Weenona Oxmoor Road. Now, during the school time, we have problems with the parents getting their kids back and forth to school. Also, we have the school bus coming from Vestavia Hills, picking up kids over there to take them back to school. We cannot afford more traffic on Weenona Oxmoor Road, especially when you're talking about bringing in large RVs, large RVs 40 feet long, 20 feet long, and boats. This is a terrible, terrible thing for this community. Ladies and gentlemen, we invested in Birmingham when we built houses over there. Ross Bridge is five minutes' drive right over the road from us. We love Birmingham, and we want Birmingham to love us back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavender. Next speaker?
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Lucian Blankenship. Good morning. My name is Lucian Blankenship. I'm a resident of Ridge Drew Estates in the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood, and I am here to ask the City Council to deny the applicant's request for rezoning of the former IRS building at 801 Tom Martin Avenue from mixed use to light use. Not only am I a resident of Oxmoor Valley, I own a 40-foot RV, whichever picture you guys see. I own a 40-foot RV. We store our RV in a very nice indoor storage facility, not located in a residential neighborhood. It's an indoor facility. I would never want to see an RV storage facility in my community. I know about RVs and boats, storage facilities, from my personal experience. Driving a RV, and I have to drive my RV over on Weenona Oxmoor Road to come to my house in Ridge Drew Estate to actually get it over to the neighborhood. That is a tough terrain to navigate, a 40-foot RV. I've actually even had to try and turn my RV around before, in that very property. You can see the street entering the IRS, one of it's Tom Martin, and the other one from Weenona Oxmoor. You cannot turn that without, it's a two-lane road. I have to get in the opposite lane in order to make a wide turn and still hope that I don't, and watch my cameras on the mirror to make sure I don't hit anything with the back of my RV or scratch it. So that's a tough turn, and a tough turnaround. And also, you gotta know about parking in a RV, being able to get into a unit, pull a 40-foot vehicle up and back it up. So that's a lot of things that they've not talked about in terms of how they would, how this facility would work. That two-lane road is not... That two-lane road is not, is not something, not workable. In fact, I have to make, I have to plan my route in the time of day when I move my RV around the community. As, I won't go over the history, talk about the applicant coming for our community, no. But I would want to know that that was a subsequent meeting after the original meeting that they took the vote at. I wasn't at that meeting. That meeting had 40 or 50 residents, or 10, and they all were against that. So if you add those 40 votes to the ones that you had, that number goes up significantly as to those that were opposed. And as you guys indicated, the request came for the planning commission, and it kind of moved forward. But what I did want to kind of focus on, I did get a chance to go back and review the tape of the planning committee, the council planning, zoning planning committee, and I'm, thank God that you guys have that. So I was able to kind of look at their presentation, and I kind of heard a part of it today. And it's interesting, I find it interesting that they excluded the five communities, which are closer to the IRS building than the, on the Avenue Apartments. And they talked about the, I guess, research facilities, things like that. So, and the other thing, the real reason I want the council to consider denying this is that, I'm sorry. The real reason I want the city council to consider denying this is that we were, as a community, were engaged in two studies. One, the Southwest Frangler Plan. The second one, the Brown Consultant Plan, this is a draft of it, that we participated in, it took our time, and neither of those, particularly the last one, which was just done last year with Brown Consulting, neither of those studies talked about rezoning the IRS facility. I think it would be disingenuous for this council to consider a rezoning of that building or facility when you just spent money to engage our community, talk about visioning for our community, which that was not a part of it. So I would ask you all to consider the fact that you've invested money in studies to try and figure out what our community wanted to see in that area, and never was that a part of the results of those studies. Neither of those studies have been complied with. And again, as they talked about decreasing property values, I think that is an issue. And I also find interesting that Tower Development, whose building directly next to it, will come and support this vineyard when nobody from Tower Development will live in either of those homes. If there were residents from that new development here speaking, I could hear that. Let me tell you one of the things about RVs. RVs are luxury vehicles. So an RV storage facility would increase law enforcement. It also would increase crime. RVs such as mine, they're luxury vehicles. We have a lot of amenities on them that criminals know about. They're looking to try and figure out how to get there, because they know we're not at the storage facility on a regular basis. I've got all kinds of televisions, I mean, expensive things over there. So those are things. RVs can damage roads. RVs such as mine, the smaller, they weigh anywhere from 13,000 pounds to 30,000 pounds. And once you load them with diesel fuel, gas, or the water that's necessary to operate them, once you get on the road, those damage roads just like trucks. So that is not something that we want to continue to have on that road that we've got, these pod o's that we're going to be calling you about. They said that the traffic will be reduced because they will be reducing the number of parking space from 476 to 49. But what about those 166 or 215 tenants that will be leasing those storage units, because they say it stays at least 90 percent full? What are they going to do? They going to walk to the storage unit? So I'm going to try and get on through it. So not only, we don't want to get rid of just having a building empty. Because we've been fighting for our community for over 20 years, I want to give you one example, then we have an ask of the city. That beautiful community center that we have, some of you may or may not know, that the city of Birmingham originally owned that property, and then it went to Knights of Columbia, they were going to build a lodge there, then our community stood up and fought for it, and you all partnered with us, repurchased that property, and now we have a beautiful community center there that we all enjoy, that is also a profit center for the city. So our ask of the city of Birmingham is we want you all to allow your economic development department to partner with our neighborhood and identify a developer that will develop some quality of life facilities at that site that we can walk to, such as restaurants, ice cream shops, maybe a pizza shop, a yoga spa, a mini outdoor amphitheater, a fresh vegetable market, some pop-up shops. So in closing, as an RV owner, I'm asking you all to deny, deny the applicant's request to rezon the IRS facility to light industry, light opportunities off. So if you are considering our request.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Next speaker. Next speaker.
My name is Julius Oliver, past president of Oxmore Neighborhood Association. I've been a resident of Oxmore, long since you've been alive, okay? Talking about close to 65 years. I don't know anybody in here, neighbor one, that's Mrs. Williams. She has been in Oxmore without a break, next to me. Now, it used to be a time, and I'm going to give you a little history real fast. Before the city bought, before the city got Oxmore, we got a white family that lived where Durbin Street is now, that's right across from the park. They didn't want to put storage buildings in there, okay? We went to the board, county commissioner, and they voted it down. It wasn't allowed in because the neighborhood said no. That's where it's always been. My wife's aunt from Camac, some of you may remember, came to the same city council, but sadly little Browns here, because U.S. Steel that sold property, had option on selling property, that would never would have been a Ridge View, because they were going to have commercial from West Oxmore and Shannon all the way to Camac. They shot it down. And the city went, the city went with the neighborhood saying no, okay? We had another problem where a storage company wanted to be in Oxmore, on Weenona Oxmore Road. The neighborhood came, voted no, came to the city council, came, I mean, went through the process, they went along with the neighborhood. So what I'm saying is, why is it, it's always been, when the neighborhood said no, it meant no, then they have to go through no city council. When the neighborhood said yes, that meant yes. I don't see why it would have to come here for you to tell me what I want, what I got to have in my neighborhood. I don't need RVs, Paul. I don't need it. Now, if they want to do something else, that's fine. You can sell your property if you want to. But if the neighborhood has a right, is vote on changing the zoning, then they should have that option. If they say no, they should say mean no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Next speaker.
My name is Robert Young Jr. I reside at 109 Pretoria Circle, Birmingham, Alabama. I'm also the vice president of Oxmore Neighborhood. Mr. Blankenship pretty much laid out my ideas of what happened, what's going on over there. One thing I want to bring out is that, as you mentioned, is that that same interest that would be used by this storage facility is also the interest by T-Mobile. Now, we've been asking for a traffic light, or some type of traffic study at that intersection for years, because the traffic just comes in and out over there. And if you listen to, you combine that increased traffic flow with T-Mobile with the diagram that Mr. Blankenship was giving you about what it would take for a RV coming in to that neighborhood, then it's kind of just, doesn't, it won't work. And the other thing you have to consider is that if you take an RV coming out of there, there's that main interest down there by the circirculated gas station right there at West Oxmore Road and coming up from Bluff Park. So you already have, we already have a situation now where people are using that road coming from Bluff Park as a shortcut to get to Oxmore to come up, going down that road instead of going to the traffic light and going up Lake Shore, they're cutting through that way. So you already, so you already have that increased traffic flow coming through. So that's, to bring something like the RV, RVs with boats into that neighborhood and combine that with the problem we already have with the gas, with the trucking company on the other end, West Oxmore, there's, and you increase that with the number of developments being built by developers that are coming in, that are one way in, one way out. So we have some situations over there now where if there was an emergency situation and the one interest is blocked, especially over there by Oxmore Elementary, by Oxmore Valley Elementary School, there's no way out. If they can't, if you can't come here, I'll sit and drive on that end, there's no way out. So based on the traffic, the traffic issues we're going to have over there, our neighborhood, as like Mr. Oliver said, if the neighborhood says no, then we're just asking you all to respect our wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next speaker.
I have resided in the Oxmore community ever since I was a baby. And the reason why I'm standing here is because I trust in God, and I know that God can do anything but fail. I'm asking the city council to consider your decision about this warehouse. We have traffic jams out there. I have doctor's appointments. I can't even get out down by the church down there, by the school. I have to sit there 30 minutes sometime to get out. We don't need this. We really don't. And I'm asking the city council, please consider, please consider. I vote no against it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
I'm Joseph Beck. I also am a, live in Oxmore Neighborhood, just down the street from Mr. Oliver and all of them. I too am opposed against this. You've heard all the particulars on the road, on where it's at, how tall the building is, and what they're probably going to store there. What I want to mention is, in a democracy, I remember the majority rules. So when you vote, the majority is going to rule, correct? A majority at our neighborhood meeting voted against it. Officer Alexander, you have indicated that you're going to vote for this.
No, I'm not.
You haven't? Okay. Then I stand corrected.
Please.
Okay. Please support the people that are member. In our call-in meeting, a majority was against it. Notice all the residents that have taken time out of their busy days, and you know they have trouble getting here. Not one has supported it. This is one time. I wish the IRS was still in my backyard.
Sir, can you please tell us your name again? I didn't catch it.
Joseph Beck.
Beck.
204 Durbin Street.
Thank you.
Okay?
It's just my hearing. Sorry.
No problem. Okay? Please support us. I vote against, I stand that you not go with this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Next speaker.
My name is Elaine Ferenger. I live at 211 Oxmore Place, which is in the Oxmore Glen Neighborhood. My concern is that intersection that has been mentioned several times. It's Oxmore, Oxmore intersects with West Oxmore, and then coming off of Lake Shore. There is a stoplight there, but there's not a left turn signal if you're coming down Shannon Oxmore toward Lake Shore. And I often, I traverse that a lot, or come the other direction. And the traffic can be challenging as you come off Lake Shore and you're headed toward where you turn right to Tom Martin Drive. It widens out a little bit, but you have to get out, you come in, and then you have to move out into the right-hand lane in order to make a right on that, or if you're coming the other direction, there is no left turn signal, and you have to sit there sometimes for two or three lights. I drive a RAV4, which is a small vehicle. I have to pull way into the intersection, wait for the traffic coming off of Lake Shore to clear, and then I will be one car, just one car, get through that intersection at a time. It's a short SUV, a 40-foot vehicle. I'm not sure how they would negotiate that coming through there. So just because of traffic, also, as has been mentioned several times, the usage, unless people are emptying out the gas and propane out of those, there will be fuel stored on site. So I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Amy Elveston. I reside at 253 Birmingham. I'm Ridge Estates. I apologize in advance, I'm cold, my teeth almost chattering, and I'm shaking. I'm not nervous, I'm cold. So I want to, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time talking about things that have been mentioned, but I do want to say some things to give you a mental perspective of what we're dealing with. You've heard about the traffic issues that have been there for over a decade. We don't have any working left turn signals at our intersections coming in and out. We deal with that every day. The Lattoos is a moving company. They move and store the contents for their clients, which could be presidential and are, but it could also be commercial. And if you look on their website, they list some of their commercial clients. Their moving trucks are about the size of a large U-Haul, you know that long U-Haul you can rent that can pack up a whole house? Well, that's what they do. They pack up all the contents and they want to store it somewhere. But while they say that converting these parking spaces at the IRS building are going to reduce traffic flow by 80 percent, you're going to invite a new kind of traffic. Because now we have these large moving trucks that are going to be coming across a road where traffic is only controlled on Tom Martin Drive by two stop signs. Right through Weenona Oxmore, a stop sign to stop traffic on Tom Martin only. And that's the easiest way, if any, to get in. So we don't have adequate traffic control, and now we've got compound problems that we already have with moving trucks, RVs, and boats. A little over 1,000 feet from the parking lot of the IRS building is the Oxmore Community Center. Right across the street from the Oxmore Community Center is a subdivision. Anybody who's ever attended on the, at the Oxmore Community Center, or driven by on Weenona Oxmore Road when an event was in progress, you've seen that parking lot filled to capacity and overflow, where cars park alongside the road. But there are 90, there are a little over 90 parking spaces at that community center. They want to build 100 and 66 phases for RVs and boats. Now, according to their website, this location in Oxmore, yes, it lists Birmingham as one of the clients they serve, but they also serve Mount Brook, Hollywood, Estadia, Helena, Pembroke, and Alabaster. Last year in November, according to the Birmingham Business Journal, they acquired new property in Truittsville. It's already an industrial area, and that location is going to serve Center Point, Irondale, Leeds, Pell City, Kensington, Mute, Crayton, St. Andrews. Is there a big demand for RV and boat storage in Birmingham? We're inviting problems from neighboring municipalities into our city. There's not a need to change mixed-use zoning, which supports residential There's not a need to change mixed-use zoning, which supports residential living, to light industrial. So I'm asking the council, please stand with the community, and help us preserve the quality of life that we moved over there to have, a place where people want to come and live. Don't harm us by rezoning mixed-use industrial warehouses. Now, I did a little bit of research about this type of company. You can find it on the internet. Businesses like this are normally located in suburban, out-of-town locations, not less than 14,000 feet from a subdivision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Elston. Next speaker. Are there any more speakers? Okay, do members of the council have questions or comments they want to make? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, not, sorry. Just for, since everybody didn't speak, that did stand and say that they're from this neighborhood, if you're against this, will you just raise your hand real quick? And if you're for it, will you raise your hand? If you live in the neighborhood and you're for it? Got it. I got it. I got it. I got it. I got it. All right, thank you. If you are against the rezoning, I was asking you to raise your hand. All right. All right, thank you. That's all.
Is that, that's all? Okay, any other, anyone else?
Yes, Mrs. Abbott, I have some questions. Thank you.
Yes, Madam President?
Yes, it's very clear to us this morning, the direction that the neighborhood wants to go in, and I would like to ask the resident to retract what you said. I have been at every neighborhood meeting and have never supported this particular item. So I do appreciate you if you would retract that, because that is not true.
I retract it.
Thank you. And in the future, if you want to know what my opinion is, you can call me directly. You don't have to get that from anyone. I'm very happy to talk to anyone about it. My questions, thank you. Appreciate you. Here is what I would like to ask, because I just want this to be clarified, but I know what direction we're going in, but I do want to be sure that it's noted. Mr. Gambriel, I would like to know about the adjacent neighborhoods and the notification of those neighborhoods as far as the rezoning, and the fact that the neighborhood felt that they weren't given that opportunity. Can you tell us why that happened, or what happened in that case?
You speaking to the P&amp;Z meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, I guess our position is that, you know, the planning and zoning meeting is a meeting of the city council. We typically, you know, notify folks. I think there was a late notice of the meeting time, and so that created some challenges.
All right, thank you. And the other item I have to ask in support of the neighborhood, every time there is a new development, or a new, some growth in building in the neighborhood, they often ask for a traffic study. So can I just find out, why are we not honoring that request, and why is the traffic study isn't being done?
I think James Fowler, the Director of Birmingham Department of Transportation, would probably be best suited to speak to that.
Well, I just wanna say that I have asked in the past for, I don't know if this would be like a calming study, or how we could get some traffic studies done there. I did talk with, I believe it's Colin Alexander that's in the Department of Transportation.
Yes, ma'am.
So that question has been raised, as to how we can create those traffic studies on our own within the neighborhood and with the district. So, that is something we'll be bringing back and asking for, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, I just have a comment.
Dr. O'Quinn.
Yes, I just wanted to address one of the comments made by a resident pertaining to the neighborhood vote, just so that everyone understands, anytime, you know, a neighborhood is asked to vote on an issue, that vote is a recommendation to the council. So, you know, the ultimate decision on these issues is decided by the council. We, you know, as part of our community engagement process, seek the input of the neighborhood, and that is, you know, always very important to how we weigh these decisions. But, you know, just to be clear, when a, you know, a neighborhood votes on an issue, that is just part of a larger process, but the ultimate decision always is in the hands of the council.
Well, thank you for saying that, because, now, I don't have to say it. So this is, this is a public hearing. Now, we'll give the applicants an opportunity. If there was anything that was said that was inaccurate, that you disagree with, and feel like you need to let us know, you know, I wanna give you the opportunity to get up and correct it, if there is anything.
Thank you. I guess our, I'll try to organize these as best as possible. It was our understanding that going to the neighborhood meeting was the neighborhood's opportunity to express their support or lack of support for the project. I think the showing here is not indicative of that neighborhood meeting, where 40 percent voted in favor and 60 percent. We have some additional letters of support that we got signed by both business members in the community and by residents of the community, one of which is Stan Brown, who's the HOA president of Oxmoor Village that's a half a mile away. We weren't trying to use a sleight of hand by not mentioning the neighborhoods and the homes that, as from my measurement on Google Maps, were a half a mile to the west of the property. What we were trying to show in that map is that the immediate adjacent businesses encapsulate the property and are largely industrial or commercial. Reason there wasn't a traffic study, as far as I understand, is that this was sent to BDOT, and it was inherent that the use of the property as a self-storage facility would generate a reduction in traffic. And I think it's important to note that those two desires, to see the property used as something else, and to see a reduction in traffic, are exclusive of one another. Imagine that IRS does come back, and over 300 employees start commuting there daily. What does traffic look like in that neighborhood then? So, you know, I think we're interested in working with the neighborhood to address the concerns. We wanna be a good member of the community on. We, we sent an email to President Alexander and Ms. Green on May 8th, just trying to understand what are, you know, what can you list out, all the concerns of the neighborhood, so we can be proactive in addressing them? I don't know. Love to hand these out. The concerns that we received were, you know, what's the landscaping going to look like? Can you give us more information on the Losh Bay? And what are the property amenities and improvements? Those were, that was the response that we got, and those were the concerns we tried to address, in addition to the ones we heard at the Oxmoor Neighborhood Meeting and in subsequent hearings. It was our goal that of the 60 percent that voted against the project, that we would make every effort to solve those concerns, so that 60 percent can be reduced. We have the ability to flex and have fewer RV and boat storage on premises, if that is a concern of the neighborhood. I think what, I think what is lacking in understanding is that we are truly interested in working well with the neighborhood, and solving the concerns that they have. We simply, we simply address the concerns that had been spoken about previously, in addition to these that were asked of us, of course, in the middle of last week. Obviously, we can't solve the problem of the city partnership to see property being partnered with the city and turning it into a payment district. That's not us. We can't do that. But we are really interested in, and some of the other small things that I wanted to point out. We operate our trucks in the area, they're very similar to a UPS delivery truck, similar in size. We don't have issue navigating that area. We actually asked after one of the previous meetings where there was concern about large vehicle access to the site, we asked the same person who did the score feasibility report for us, how many, you know, what could we expect in terms of large truck traffic to the site? And they said approximately five, when property is stabilized, approximately five large vehicles coming and going every day. That's one every two hours. My opinion, that impact is minimal. And the reason for the height on the 16-foot buildings is to give clearance for the RVs to come in and out. Not going to be a forklift on site. Propane will not be allowed to be stored on site. So, hope this answers some of the questions.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions from the members of the council, I believe we're ready to vote.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Abbott, for conducting this hearing. I wanna thank the developer, as well as the residents, who have voiced their concerns today. Thank you, councilors, for considering this item. At this time, we'll call for the vote. Well, we don't, we don't see any. We don't see the vote up.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Let's call a roll, call a vote, please.
I'll do it that way. Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
No.
Councilmember Tate?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
President Potem Smitherman?
No.
Council President Alexander?
No. All right, thank you, councilors. That item fails. Next item.
Next item is. Next item is also on page two, item number two, a resolution approving, a resolution to approve the application of Infinity Waste and Recycling LLC for a solid waste facility license to pick up and transport waste within the city of Birmingham, and to grant Infinity Waste and Recycling LLC's request for waiver pursuant to Section 12-21-12 of the General City Code of the City of Birmingham of inapplicable requirements, given that Infinity Waste and Recycling LLC does not have a location within the city where waste is treated or disposed.
I move approval.
All right, thank you, councilors. This item is up before us, and this is a resolution to approve the application of Infinity Waste and Recycling. This was submitted by the city attorney, it's been recommended by the mayor and the chair of P.I.C. Any questions about this item? Dr. O'Quinn?
Yes, ma'am. So, I'm not familiar with this application. Can fill me in on the details. I'm just concerned, is this gonna be a facility that's similar to the Birmingham Recycling and Recovery?
No, so, I'm sorry, Madam President.
That's okay.
No, my, and I'll give to the city attorney, but my understanding is just to allow this company to come in and get waste from certain vendors, like if, let's just say, be the fire and rescue service had medical waste that needed to be disposed. This company comes out, because they're from out of the city, they come into the city to get the waste, remove it, and take it to an off-site location to properly dispose it. So it's no facility, it's just them having the ability to come into Birmingham to get the waste and take the waste away.
Okay, and their facility that they're bringing it to is already an established location?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay.
This is just giving them permission to come into the city, because they're not in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore?
Aye, yes.
Councilor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilor Tate?
Yes.
Councilor Williams? Councilor Woods? President Potem Smitherman?
Yes.
Council President Alexander?
Yes. Thank you, that item passes. Next item.
Next item is item number three, also on page two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with L. Williams and Associates LLC, in substantially the same form as on file in the office of the city clerk, under which the city will convey to L. Williams and Associates property known as the Cash Connection Western Union Building, located at 2119 Fifth Avenue North, Birmingham, for a use value of $250,000, for use as a professional counseling and psychological rehabilitation facility, under Section 2124, I'm sorry, dash two dash six of the Code of Alabama, 1975, which allows the city to make land in a redevelopment project available for use by private enterprises at its use value, which represents the value at which the city determines such land should be made available in order that it may be redeveloped for the purposes specified. This is item of permanent operation in the first reading, so we need unanimous consent. Aye.
Motion for unanimous consent.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
All right, councilors, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with L. Williams and Associates. Any questions regarding this item? Councilor O'Quinn?
Just a comment real quick. I just wanna thank the mayor's office for finally moving this. And I think we're gonna have a great property owner that's gonna be delivering a service that's definitely needed in this part of town, so congratulations to you as well, Ms. Williams. Just very happy to see this. This is, you know, been a location that's definitely needed some improvement for a long time, so thank you for your interest, and thank you for the services that you're gonna be bringing to the citizens of Birmingham.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. We'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
O'Quinn?
Aye.
House President Alexander?
Aye. Thank you, that item passes. Next item.
Next item will be on page three. That's item number four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $3,099.71 to execute a quitclaim deed to John Regal for the sale of property legally described as East 80 Feet Lots, 12th and 13th, Block 28, Birmingham Realty Company's Edition Number Four, as recorded in Map Book Nine, Page 14, in the office of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama, PID 2200244023001000, City Account 4975, and located at 2909 15th Avenue North, Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens, in accordance with Section 3-1-4C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. Again, this is an item of permanent operation, and we need.
Motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
For the item.
Second.
All right, councilors, this ordinance is before us, and any questions about this particular item? All right, this time we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Oh, it's working. Mine came out.
It's up now. Yes.
But I'll say aye, if you wanna go ahead with it.
Well, if it's working.
Dr. O'Quinn's isn't up, though.
Councilor O'Quinn, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that item passes.
Next item is item number five, also on page three. An ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $10,583.17 and 17 cents. An ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $10,583.17 to execute a quitclaim deed to John Regal for the sale of property legally described as South 45 Feet Lot 5, Block 674, Birmingham, as reported in Mapbook 800, Page One, in the office of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama, P.I.D. 220025100500300, City Account 4978, and located at 1301 29th Street North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvements with Section 3-1-4C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, and again, we need...
I move for unanimous consent.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Remove the item.
Second.
All right, thank you, councilors, this item is before us, and this ordinance is authorizing the mayor to take payment of receipt for a quitclaim deed. Any questions regarding this item? We're ready for the vote. It's working. Dr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilor Tate?
Yes.
Councilor...
We're waiting on you.
You're waiting on me to let y'all know how mad I am about item six. Mayor?
No, we're on item five. We're on item five.
Thank you, item five passes. Next item. They came rushing back in here for... All right, Madam Clerk, that item passes. Next item.
The next item is item number six, on page three. I mean, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the city of Birmingham to enter into an interlocal governmental cooperation and cost-sharing agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for the public purpose of the restoration and maintenance of the interstate lighting on I-5920 from Tallapouche Street to the I-5920 route interchange landscaping along Birmingham area interstates, highways, and on-and-off ramps at a total cost of $3,500,000 to be divided among the parties, with the city's share of the cost to be $1,650,000.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, thank you, councilors. This resolution is before us to execute, to enter this interlocal agreement with the state of Alabama. Any questions regarding this item?
I have a question.
I'd be able to answer that.
Before you, you know, tear into the mayor, I just want to ask, is this the same interstate lighting agreement that we've been talking about? Okay.
This is the last hurdle.
Okay, so I just want to make the point, and it's not reflected here, that this item came before the Transportation Committee way back. Yeah, actually, Councilor Hoyt was the chair of the Transportation Committee then, and as I recall, the Transportation Committee did vote to recommend this to the full council, so I just wanted to make that point of clarification. Additionally, it was my understanding that the scope of the project was from basically 31st Street in Norwood to the I-2059 interchange in Woodlawn. Is that correct? Because this says Tallapouche.
What you... The answer is yes. What you see here is they're starting, but they will continue to expand. Does any of that have to come back before the council? The answer is no, but what you said holds true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, that was actually going to be my statement, because I did not see where it was going past or up to Woodlawn. It's definitely something that I'm excited about, because trust me, you know, several of the residents in that area and anybody who rides on I-59, I-20, you know, it's pitch black dark out there, and it has been for quite some time, and so, yeah, definitely excited to see it, you know, happening. Just wanted to know exactly where those lights would end.
Thank you.
And I guess additionally, one last thing, and I don't know if this is the proper time to ask or not, but are there any precautionary measures that are being taken to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Or that we... Yeah, like, are we... Do we have any new measures or new techniques?
Should we announce them?
I mean, I just need a yea or nay, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fowler, yes.
So, again, my name is James Fowler, I serve as the director of the city's Department of Transportation, and so to answer the question about security, one of the things that we're doing is we're switching to a less valuable metal, so we're switching to aluminum wiring. We're doing some other things as well that hopefully will reduce the likelihood of vandalism, or at least if someone does vandalize the system, it's just a more concentrated repairable location than opposed to... And so, short answer, yes.
Thank you, Mr... Go ahead. What was your follow-up? You had another?
The cutoff. I know he was saying that it was going to go all the way up to the Woodlawn neighborhood.
All right. While we're waiting on that question, I think, Pro Tim?
What is the funding source? I can't remember if this came before budget and finance.
The council initially approved a grant match fund for the interstate lighting. It's a multi-year agreement. I think the first payment is, actually, we're getting money from ALDOT for the first payment, and then going forward, we have, in the proposed budget, the rest of the funding for the rest of the grant match with ALDOT.
Okay, thank you. Do we have the answer?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Fowler.
So, I believe the question was specifically about the Woodlawn interchange. So, it should be the same map that was shown previously, and, which I do believe actually included that full interchange right there. We will get confirmation on that, but I believe it actually does include that whole Woodlawn.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
For your chairman, do you remember?
Yes, and I can tell you, just from observation, you know, living in the neighborhood, there's work being done already. You know, you can see the junction boxes have been installed at the base of each of the poles, and, you know, the fixtures are... Have been installed on top of poles, it looks like, so I can confirm that at the 2059 interchange, you know, that there's work being done on the lighting there currently, so.
Is the source Tallapouche?
Okay, so we will have extended service beyond there, or work in the future.
So...
Yes, Mrs. Abbott?
I just wanted to ask, now, were you going to use aluminum wiring, which I know the world has tried to go away from aluminum wiring because it catches people's houses on fire, but this isn't in a house. How are we going to let the thieves know that there's no copper in there? Because the thieves will come and steal it, and then they'll just throw it away, and it will have cost us $1.6 million to put it there, so how are we going to, you know, like, you know, have some little signs up there that say aluminum wiring? You don't want this, or?
Yes, ma'am. Well, one, we've tried to be very public and transparent about it in TV interviews and whenever questions, but stickers aren't a bad idea, so we can look into some stickers as well. And then, I would like to iter or explain that we cannot completely assure you that there will never be vandalism, however, this will likely reduce...
Yeah, the only way to really do it is to have solar lighting and have it all on the top of the pole, so they have to climb up there to get it, but I guess that's not a possibility. Anyway, I just wondered, because thieves, you know, they just do their thieving thing and don't spend a lot of time thinking, I don't think.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Do we have comments out here, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, can we continue this project? Well, first of all, what's the... Do we have a timeline for this project, Mr. Fowler?
They are working on the project now. ALDOT is in good faith, so thank you for... Their goal is to get as much of it completed before the World Games, and if there's something that does not get completed before the World Games, it would be this summer.
Okay. Mr. Fowler, what would it take to extend this project from the, I guess we're calling it the Woodlawn intersection, but I'm assuming we're the 2059, all the way east along the city of Birmingham, and then also on I-20, all the way over to, I guess, the Irndale city lot... Excuse me, the Irndale city limits, and all of that area that is also the city of Birmingham?
So, while I don't have a price for that specifically, one thing that I should note is that as a part of this partnership with ALDOT, they are making repairs, which includes Green Springs, University Boulevard, Arkadelphia, and then some of the Inslee interchange. That's a part of the work that ALDOT is doing. To further extend beyond these extents, obviously, would require a larger investment, and so, that would be...
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Mayor, can we please look at what it's going to take in the short term to extend this along the eastern side of Birmingham, both from that Woodlawn exchange down towards the Parkway, and then also on I-20 towards Irndale?
Thank you, Councilor Williams, Madam President to the council. I think what we can do is begin to reach out to ALDOT and begin those conversations and start those assessments. You know, I'm always straight with you, I think the term "short term" frightens me a little bit, because I don't know if I can make a commitment in short term, because I don't know what the actual cost is, but to extend the work, we need to assess costs, et cetera, be in a position to tell you what that is, and then, in partnership with ALDOT, see what we can, financial agreement we can work out with to continue the work.
So, can I have your commitment to getting this done without the word "short term" involved to initiate those conversations with ALDOT?
Our commitment to engage ALDOT, absolutely.
All right.
But we need ALDOT at the table, because we can't do it alone.
Yes, sir. Understood.
But let me... The position you're in is, I know the residents in that area are reaching out to you, and they reached out to us, saying, hey, we, one, need this as well. We agree. Please consider today, everybody, as a start. This will be a long, very long-term project. I think it took us, what, a little over two years to get to today?
Yes, sir. So, we explored a number of different avenues, partnership ideas for how to accomplish this, and so, eventually landed on this model where we're partnering directly with ALDOT, but it's just the scale of the infrastructure that... The size, the cost of the infrastructure, so big, that it's hard for us to balance that in with all the other programs.
But let us know when we need to go talk to those folk over in that area who want this request, so we can be a little bit more realistic and honest with them as far as process, et cetera. I'll go with you.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. You know, in this plan that I've only seen in the... It wasn't... The mapping wasn't in our packet, but what was released to the media, which I presume is what we're going off of, really does not include the eastern side of Birmingham, so I just want to be very intentional about making sure that we do that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, I believe you have a follow-up?
So, it's my understanding, just based off previous conversations, that there's roughly 30,000 street light fixtures in the city of Birmingham, which, you know, may include our intersection signals, which there's probably, I think, 700-plus signalized intersections, and based on what I've learned over the years, energizing those fixtures costs the city roughly $7 million a year. I don't know that folks are aware of that, but, you know, the lights coming on at night isn't free. So, my question is, is that I know this particular segment has roughly about 400 fixtures, and, you know, there's, I would assume, thousands of others that are currently not working along our highways that, you know, are part of this, the scope of repair for the future. So, my question is, is basically, what is going to be the ongoing cost in terms of energizing, you know, this particular section of lighting, and that would give us a reference point to how, what our power bill is going to look like as we continue to make these repairs?
I don't think I can give a specific cost as to how much this section of lighting would cost to energize, but we can find the answer to that, and after we're back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote.
Aye.
Councilor O'Quinn?
Aye.
Council...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, I know. About to lose a quorum. Okay. Next item, please. That item passes. Next item.
I'm going to go to page eight, item number 25.
Page eight, item 25.
That's a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Adapco LLC, Lake Mary, Florida, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 20 and 27, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted, meeting specifications.
Did we just read all of them?
Yes, I was just going to ask if they're all relating to the same subject, so if you read them all, thank you.
On page nine, we have item number 26. It's a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Clark Mosquito Control Products Inc., St. Charles, Illinois, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 18, 19, and 44, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted. Item number 27, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Green Point AG Holdings LLC Birmingham for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 3, 8, 12, 14, 26, 33, 38, 46, 47, 58, 60 to 62, 64, 66, 71, 72, 76, 80, 84, 92, 96, 100, 101, 108, 109, 123, 126, 130, 143, 148, 155, 157, 159, 160, and 170, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted, meeting specifications. Item number 28, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Humphreys Farm Turf Supply Joppa, Alabama, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 4, 6, 7, 10, 28, 36, 47, 69, 106... line items 4, 6, 7, 10, 28, 36, 47, 69, 106, 128, 132, 144, 150 to 152, 154, 156, 162, 165, and 169 is needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted. Item number 29. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Marubini America Corporation, DVA Helena Agri, AKA Helena Chemical Company, Selma, Alabama, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 87, 91, 95, 97 through 99, 103 to 105, 107, 112, and 116, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted meeting specifications. And on page 10, item 30. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Red River Specialties LLC, Shreveport, Louisiana, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 39, 56, 68, 73, 75, 86, 88 to 90, 93, 94, 102, 110, 113 to 115, and 117 to 121, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted meeting specifications. Item 31. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Site One Landscape Supply, Cleveland, Ohio, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 1, 2, 5, 11, 13, 15, 23 to 25, 29 through 32, 35, 41, 43, 45, 51, 53, 59, 65, 74, 77, 78, 81, 85, 122, 124, 129, 131, 135, 136 through 141, 146, 149, 153, 158, 168, and 169, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted meeting specifications. Item 32. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Southern States Cooperative, Inc., Richmond, Virginia, for pesticides, fertilizers, and soil amendments, line items 9, 17, 24, 48, 49, 55, 63, 67, 70, 82, 83, 145, and 161, as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted meeting specifications. And item on page 11, item number 34. A resolution approving payment to Greenpoint AG Holdings, DVA Universal, Birmingham, Alabama, in the amount of $6,257.35 for the purchase of various herbicides for the Public Works Department in accordance with Section 3-1-7 of the Birmingham City Code.
And did we read item 32? We did. Okay. I'm sorry, I got lost. All right. Thank you, councilors. Do we have a motion and a second for these items? A second? All right, thank you. Counselor O'Quinn, you pulled these items. Is there a discussion?
Yes. So this is, based on our packet, is a very extensive list of chemicals. And I think we, you know, as I understand it, our Public Works Department has an opt-out option for people who, you know, residents who don't want Public Works to come spray insecticides or herbicides around their property. So I just want to make mention, you know, that that is an option. It hasn't always worked entirely perfectly, but it is there. And we encourage people to do that. However, I don't know. I'm concerned that these chemicals may be used. You know, I assume that they're being used in public spaces, spaces that are accessible to the public. I mean, you know, I assume that some of them are being used in buildings, but a lot of them are probably being used for weed abatement and that sort of thing. So I don't know if our process for weed abatement includes any kind of prior public notice of what chemicals are being applied where. So all of that to say that I would hope that we have some means of notifying the public prior to the application of these chemicals so that they do have that option to communicate to Public Works that, and made it known that they would like to opt out. And that's the extent of my concern.
Thank you. And I'll allow Chief Mitchell to respond. I do know there is an opt-out process. Do you know if that is communicated each year or during the season? Or, and then with C, Click, Fix, I wonder if that can be an opportunity for residents to utilize that? But is it done through 311? Could you just tell us how that's done?
Yeah. It's my understanding that the opt-out program is handled through DPW where they can actually call the 311 or sleek, C, Click, Fix, to make their, you know, their concession to not wanting mosquitoes sprayed. But I just wanted the council to know that these items are not just all mosquito spray, but that, like you said, council, that deals with ant bait and different type of things that we do inside buildings. A lot of them, the herbicide applications that we do for the weed abatement program. And you're, it's noted that you're, we hear you. I understand what you're trying to do. And we'll try and convey that to DPW to be more vocal to the community to let them know about the different type of sprays or chemicals that's being sprayed that could affect animals, our people. We, I hear you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I do want to say that I did visit a resident. And so I do know there is some knowledge of residents about the weed abatement process and their desire, if they have a lot that's next to them, that they have asked before that they not have that spraying because it, the rains may bring that down and they have pits and things like that. So I think the more that we get that message out there to the public, the more they'll be aware when that, they can utilize that option. So thank you. All right. Thank you. We'll call for the vote. The vote has started. Thank you. Counselor O'Quinn?
No.
Well, mine says yes, and I didn't punch it.
Okay. Yours, bless you. Yours is no.
Yeah, mine's no.
Counselor Tate? All right, thank you. Those items pass. Thank you very much. Next item? I think that concludes us. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, I don't, do we still have?
I believe that we suspend the rules for our public speakers.
Thank you. I believe we have one resident. Thank you. All those in favor?
Let me know by saying aye.
All right, thank you.
All opposed.
All right, ma'am. If you'll come up to the podium, you give us your name and address. And you have three minutes. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
If you'll pull that just a little closer to your mouth.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Elizabeth Sanfilippo. I live at 1431 33rd Street, South. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as the Neighborhood Association President and the president of the Red Mountain Community. Not aware that there's a new rule about the public speaking at city council meetings, only on the first and third. So I would ask that we help publicize that and let people know.
We definitely will. It's a practice that I just had the opportunity as the presiding officer. But we will entertain that with the council and look at our rules. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'm here today to express concern. I had some other members of the community with me, and they had to leave for various reasons. But we are concerned and frustrated with dilapidated houses in our neighborhood. I understand that there is a problem with blight across our entire city. These are not situations where someone is, it's their main house, and they're in a financial situation where they cannot repair their homes. These are people who do not live in these homes. They've owned them. They've been condemned. They're in terrible shape. And they are nuisance. And so I'm here to just reiterate. I've gone to council meetings. I've gone to Public Improvement Committee meetings. I've spoken with the owners. There just, there doesn't seem to be any relief in terms of enforcing the maintenance code. They keep going to court. They pay the fines. The process starts over. When, when does this end? This has begun, became, this has, this has become a game for at least one of these owners. And he, he, I don't see any intention of him actually fixing up the houses. He does the minimal amount of work. His permits get voided because I continue to press the city and ask for updates and say, is he calling for inspections every 30 days, which is required by the special repair permits? He continues to get them voided out. They're currently voided. Tell me what to do that I can help my residents to feel safe, that vagrants aren't going in these homes, that there's not going to be a potential fire, and that their property values are going to be protected because we do a great job. Even people who are in financial straits or because of supply chain issues, I get not everyone can maintain their house in pristine condition. This is not that situation. So there are a handful of homes in our area. I've talked with Larry Puckett and Charles Smith many, many times, and other inspectors and people in PEP. Some sort of help. I know you guys can't direct anyone to do anything specifically, but any recommendations at this point? People have been dealing with this for over 15 years. And these, these owners aren't doing anything. What can we do?
Well, thank you. Appreciate you bringing this before us as a council. I do appreciate the fact that you understand that as the council, we can't direct anyone. But these ordinances, they do belong to us. And I know that we, as a council, have been looking at ways to put more teeth into them. I do know that the Office of the City Attorney and Administration has been working on when these instances occur. I guess, I don't want to be flippant, but I want to say, welcome to my world. We see this all the time in the western section, western area. We know that we have, you're absolutely correct. We have, most of these homes are not even owned by people who are in the city of Birmingham. So we don't feel they have a, they don't care about it. And so it's something that we deal with all the time as councilors as well. But I know that we have talked about how to put more teeth into those ordinances that affect those type issues. And so I thank you for bringing that before us. You're represented. This is Mrs. Abbott. This is your counselor. If we could get more information, and then we'll be sure to escalate that further on your behalf and for the neighborhood and for all of us here who have these type issues. We'll escalate that for further review by the mayor and his team.
Okay. And do you think that it would be helpful for me to specifically request the specific addresses to be condemned and state why they are subject to condemnation?
I'm gonna let Chief Mitchell reply.
You can submit the addresses, but it's not determination for anything to be condemned. But then we'll, and we'll just take it through the proper code enforcement process.
Okay. So I should send those to you directly?
You can send them to your council representative, and she'll, I'm pretty sure she'll give them to me.
Okay.
You're pretty sure?
I'm 110% sure she'll give it to me.
Madam President, my name is up. I don't know whether you can...
Go ahead. I cannot see it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, for a while I poked it, and it didn't even work. So, like everything else up here. Including my microphone. Here, anybody need a piece? I mean, I've got... I have on my iPad here photographs I went by and took of the sisters' houses, which are the two houses that are tied up in court that are sort of being renovated. They have a lot of scaffolding around them. But it is incredibly frustrating. These houses looked like this when I ran for office the first time. And the issue is, there's, there's an owner, and he bought up a bunch of old houses in the neighborhood back, I guess he was a teenager. And he has let them all fall into wreck and ruin. But no, well, I won't say no one. I don't want to see the houses torn down. They're nice, they could be nice houses if someone fixed them. You know, my issue is just fix up the outside so that it looks like it fits into the community. And I think if it, you know, if your fireplace has missing tiles inside, who cares? I don't know what this gentleman is doing. He's gotten to a point and then apparently stopped. And, you know, I went by there, and I just, I, I understand the frustration of the community, but I don't want to see the bulldozers come. Now, the city of Birmingham, back a large number of years ago, worked with the state legislature, and we got the demolition, it was called the demolition by neglect law. And the purpose of it was to stop people from allowing their properties to simply demolish themselves by sitting and decaying until, you know, they collapsed. You know, the guy that owned the Lyric tried to do that. He didn't know the roof was concrete. But, you know, there are people who let their places sit, hoping they will cave in, and then I guess they won't have to pay the demolition cost. But these are beautiful homes. Now, the demolition by neglect law, as I recall, we've never used it. And I know we had attorneys in the law department who, after the city paid attorneys to get it passed in Montgomery, say that it's not usable. So I'm very confused about that. And maybe our new Office of the City Attorney can figure out why they say that. But it allowed the city to come in and take over. Now, we're not in the housing business, but, you know, it allowed us to take over, fix the place, and then, you know, put a lien on it. Something's got to give. I mean, this has been dragging on for 30 years? And it's one, it's not just one guy, but it's, in Highland Park, it's pretty close to just one guy.
Well, the, the other one who is, or passed away, and his are now owned in a trust.
Oh, great. Anyway, so we do have an issue. And these are, these are beautiful homes. And I don't, I don't, except for the frustrated people, I don't know anybody that wants to see the bulldozers come. But there has to be a way to force this guy. Sell them to somebody else who wants to fix them.
Or there's a line of people that would buy them?
Yeah. I mean, this is, that, that's the, you know, the age we live in. So it is extremely frustrating that the city does not really seem to have any control. And, you know, maybe we needs, we need to figure out a legislative way to do it. But we, we got that law passed in Montgomery, and then we have never, ever used it. You know, we gotta figure something out.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, Chief Mitchell.
I think Madam City Attorney took notes about that. So we'll investigate that and report back to the council to see if that's a viable means for us to try and take care of this neglected...
And there has to be a way to light a fire under these people.
Because of repeated fines are...
Some folks would like to literally light a fire under him. They're so sick of this mess in the community. But it, it brings down other people's property values. And it just, it just looks horrible. It makes it look like the city doesn't care because we allow this to go on for so long.
I agree.
And every, all of us have it. But, you know, Highland Avenue is a very visible place, and lots of people drive by on their way to Rojo. So, you know, they're gonna see it.
Thank you. Again, we do appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And the administration and our OCA will be working to see what we can do for this. I think Pro Tem had and...
I guess my question is, well, Counsel Abbott kind of touched on it. I thought we had put something on our legislative agenda about that. Am I wrong? About vacant owners? Is this something we need to go to the state and re-ask them to help us out?
So I'm, I'm not 100% sure. But I vaguely remember something about dilapidated, dilapidated property. property. Just allow some time to figure that out and follow with OCA. And I think it was Julie Bernard was working on some type of legislation that was, we could present to the council to get their okay on it before we put it in a legislative agenda.
Okay. And Attorney King, I know y'all are swamped with a lot of things, but I think this is an issue that touches on all nine districts. And all of our districts are very unique, but some of these things we really need help on like this. Because it's ridiculous and it really affects us bringing more people into the city too. Because we can give this to people who actually want to invest in these homes and build them up, especially young families. And then that helps to build our school system and just the community overall.
Thank you. As you know, our OCA D-NET team will look into property nuisances like this as well. So we're on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
You so much for your time.
All right. At this time, councilors, we will go back to the agenda and we'll have our council updates. Can I start with you, Ms. Tate? Are you ready?
Yes, Ms. Tate.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few quick announcements. Our Dolanite might neighborhood will meet this evening at 6:00 PM via conference call. The dialing number is 602-580-9525. The access code is 378-9426. The Enrich Neighborhood will meet via Zoom on Thursday at 5:30 PM. And public safety meeting will be today, 1:00 PM in this council chamber. The next public safety meeting will be Tuesday, June the 14th at 1:00 PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brenda McCray on later than Thursday, June the 9th by 1:00 PM. And North Pratt will have their cleanup initiative on Saturday, May the 28th from 10:00 to 12:00. You can meet them at the One Pratt Park located at 601 Dugan Avenue. And just wanted to, I think I got a few, a video, the D9 Be Litter Free campaign wrapped up this weekend with two neighborhood cleanups in Sandusky and where else were we? Smithfield Estates. And so that's it for me, Madam President.
All right. Thank you very much. Will, do you mind if we call for that video at the end of council meeting? Thank you. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Crestline will be meeting this Thursday, May 26 at 6:30 PM. And then also the Eastlake Farmers Market is back Saturdays from 8:00 to 12:00. And that's obviously at Southeastlake United Methodist Church. Go out there and check it out. And then if you're on SNAP or EBT, you can use those products there to get fresh fruits and vegetables. And you can actually get two for one. So you get twice the amount for whatever dollar you would spend in a grocery store. So go out to Southeastlake United Methodist Church for the Farmers Market every Saturday, 8:00 to noon. Thanks.
Very nice. Thank you very much. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, we have one neighborhood meeting in District 8 this week. It's the Bush Hills Neighborhood Association. That meeting will take place via Zoom this evening at 6:30. And you can go to www.bushhills.org to get the login information. And this past Saturday, our Be Litter Free campaign made a stop at Tuxedo Junction. We, we met at the Erskine Hawkins Park and met up with our partners, the Black Warrior River Keepers, Birmingham Municipal Court, and the Tuxedo Neighborhood Association. And this time we went into, on the streets and in the alleys and we picked up 284 pounds of trash. And I especially want to thank the Tuxedo Neighborhood President, Maureen Coleman, and her crew for feeding us after we worked in the neighborhood. It was a fun time. And, and I also especially enjoyed hearing stories from some of the longtime residents about the Erskine Hawkins home and some of that jazz heritage, which hits me close to home. So as a, as a, I'm a child of jazz musicians, so. You don't want to miss the largest community fishing event in the state of Alabama. It's the 25th Annual Family Fishing Rodeo at Eastlake Park and it's taking place on Saturday, June 11th, bright and early. You can call the park board at 254, I'm sorry, 205-254-2391 for more information. Also on June 11th, residents in the Five Points West community are encouraged to participate in a family, a community family fun day at the Crossplex on June 11th from 10:00 to 4:00. And so if you live in Bellevue Heights, Bush Hills, Central Park, Inslee Highlands, Fairview, or Green Acres Neighborhood, you should come to enjoy free food, music vendors, I mean, games and vendors. It's a good opportunity to meet your neighbors and learn about the neighborhood associations and other initiatives in your area. And I'm certainly going to be there. So come see me too. On a more somber note, tomorrow will mark the two-year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. I want to remind us to mark the significance of that moment in our country's history and may we all renew and keep following through on our commitments to creating racial justice in this world while we yet breathe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Moore?
Yes, so I have video announcements, but I do want to give a huge shout out to the president of the Inglewood Neighborhood Association, Reverend Gordon Delinwell. Thank you for being here today. And like I said, we'll have my announcements play at the end of the council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Abbott?
Well, there are 44 days left before the World Games gets here. And we've got to be ready. I will say that there are activities going on at Bessie Estelle and Avondale Parks, getting ready for the events that are going to be there. So it's exciting to see that and to see all of the amazing wheelchair ramps that we're having installed all around those parks. So, you know, get it any way you can. The Planning and Zoning Committee will meet on May 25th and we will hear the case that we would have heard if we hadn't had the big leak here in City Hall and had to cancel our last meeting. So that meeting will be tomorrow. And I have on my calendar that the Redmont Park neighborhood meeting is at 5:00 today, but we haven't confirmed that. So I guess if you live in Redmont, you should check around and see if you're having a meeting. And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Quinn?
Yes, thank you. So just a reminder to folks relative to the World Games that there are going to be a number of street closures around the venues and there's quite a lot of them. I definitely encourage people to go and check out the map that's been published by our Department of Transportation. And, and please ask questions about that to make sure that you're absolutely clear about when those street closures are going to occur and about alternate routes. In addition, and I'm sure this has been widely circulated already, but there, the city is going to be limiting construction in, in and around those venues due to safety concerns. So for people who are considering a construction project or currently have a construction project in progress, please know that your ability to, to get permitting and building inspections done during that time, it may be affected and you'll want to, again, inquire with our Department of Permits Engineering, Planning and Engineering and Permits to make sure that your, your work is not inconvenienced. Counselor Smithman and I participated in, and Counselor Clark was also there at the reopening of the 20th Street this past week. And we have a video on that which can run after the meeting. And so I'll move on. Crestwood, the Crestwood neighborhood had a cleanup in Crestwood Park this past Saturday. We were able to do a lot of things that really improved the appearance of the park. So I want to thank everyone who was involved in planning that event and also participating in the work on Saturday. We even had a couple of folks from Birmingham Park and Recreation, a couple of employees that came out and helped. So many thanks to them. Crestwood North is going to be having their neighborhood association, neighborhood association meeting tonight. That's 6:30 at Girls Inc., located at 5130 Eighth Court South. Smithfield is having a neighborhood cleanup on Saturday, June 11th at 9:00 AM, starting at Friendly Baptist Church located at 926th Street North. If you would like to participate or need additional information, please contact my office at 205-254-2679. And finally, we have two board openings for which we are soliciting interested persons who want to serve on those boards. The first is the Birmingham Parking Authority Board. Please note that you must be a resident of the city of Birmingham in order to qualify and be considered for that position. And the second is a board opening on the Jefferson County Port Authority Board. And for that position, you must be a resident of Jefferson County. If you're interested, please email your resume and letter of interest to maisha.hutchinson@maisha.hutchinson@birminghamal.gov or myself by Monday, June 20th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet Monday, June 13th at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, June 8th by noon to Laquita Wilson and A.J. Gray. Just a reminder, budget hearings are coming up next month. We will have them Monday, June 6th at 5:30 PM here in the chambers and Thursday, June 16th at 5:30 PM. We also have an option for you to briefly talk to the Budget and Finance Committee on that Monday, June 13th date. The next PIC meeting will be Tuesday, June 7th at 2:00 PM here in the chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, June 1st by noon. Also, councilors, just a reminder, your budget questions are due at the end of the week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Pro Tem, Budget Chair. Counselors, here are my comments for District 7. Actually, I just have two announcements I want to make. First, the Birmingham Stallions are still undefeated. They will go up against the Pittsburgh Maulers on that Sunday, May 29th at 1:00 PM at Protective Stadium. Very nice, family-friendly event and opportunity for you to get out with your family. As you know, Mayor Woodfin has spoken during the graduation season. I think he gave the commencement address at Tennessee State. He also gave one at Birmingham Southern. Not to be left out, I just want to let you know that I'll be bringing the commencement address at the Miracle Academy Private Christian School. It's their first graduation from K through eighth grade. So I'm so honored that they have decided to ask me to bring their first graduation speech. So anyone that's a good speechwriter, come on, give me some help. But that'll be Friday, May 27th. That is in D7 on Hickory Avenue. So I'll be excited to do that. And I just want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day to all my colleagues and all the citizens of Birmingham. I want to wish Mrs. Abbott a belated happy birthday.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service and also for conducting the public meeting today. So thank you so much.
It was fun.
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
I forgot to say this. I hope you still in the building can hear this. Mayor Woodfin's birthday, I think it's on Monday.
Okay.
So happy birthday to Mayor Woodfin.
Thank you very much. And don't, that's, here we go, yes. And today is voting day. We, the polls are open until 7:00 PM. I see some of my colleagues, I don't know if anybody got to go vote before council meeting today, but please, we talk about our youth and where they know how to, know where they've been or know where they're going. This opportunity to vote, this is a right that people died and for us to have this opportunity to be able to vote. So go out and exercise your vote. There's some candidates out there that really want you to come out and vote today. So please go out there and vote for them. We've been in those shoes before. So please go out and vote. I would like to thank, they've left the building, but we'd like to thank our officers who are on duty. Ms. Cedric Hinkert from City Hall, Gerard Williams from the South Precinct, and Ben Carpenter also from South Precinct. This time, councilors, can I entertain that motion?
Before, before you, before you go away, is anybody besides me having trouble with the city's website finding the trash and brush for 2022 instead of 2020? I mean...
I've had that encounter, but I keep, I backdoored somehow. So maybe this is something we do want to be sure that administration is aware of, our communications team and DPW, because it does take some searching to get it. It doesn't pull right up.
People have complained and I thought, oh, I know how to do it, you know? And I just went on there and I poked this big giant screen that says trash and brush. And when you poke it, it says the page has been moved, but it doesn't tell you where they moved it to. And then when you do a search, it takes you to 2020's May brush cleanup. So something's broken.
We'll be sure to note that and get that up.
It's either that or I have forgotten how to operate my computer.
No, you were right. Thank you.
Motion, Judge.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. And thank you. And remember, our videos will follow the meeting. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Good morning, everyone. This is Councilman JT Moore and I'm here to give you D4 announcements for this week. First of all, Nicole, thank you for having me here at Maple's Corner. It's a beautiful space. Just wanted to, you know, come over here and just really highlight you because, you know, you have this space here that people could come and get food and, you know, come and shop for groceries and all kinds of things.
What I would like to see in the community is for the people to be able to come together. My store represents, I love the people in Collegeville. I really do. I try to help in any type of way I can. For the past couple of years, I've had back to school to where I've given away, they wrote essays for laptops. I also gave away school supplies that year, that first year. And so the last year, I just had it back there in the bag and gave away school supplies. And I just want to see the community be in a better state than it's in right now, especially the youth, because if we don't have them together, then we don't have anything.
I just want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Nicole Watts, the owner of Maple's Corner over in Collegeville. It's a great place to come and get some food, to come and just chill. A lot of great products for you to purchase and buy. And so if you're ever in the Collegeville neighborhood, make sure that you come and check them out and come support the business. As far as neighborhood associations go this week, we only have one. We have Norwood Neighborhood Association that will be meeting up on Wednesday. So if you're in the Norwood neighborhood, please make sure that you're in attendance. There's a lot of great information going forward and I know Ms. President Gowdy would love to hear from you all. This Wednesday, the UAB Market will actually be in the Kingston neighborhood at the 11th Avenue Church of Christ in Kingston. And so from 9:00 to 10:00 AM, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, they will actually be providing affordable fruits and vegetables right there. So if you're looking forward to getting some of those, please make sure that you're in attendance. Ladies, this Friday, we will have Dr. Celeste Willis over at the Inglewood Library discussing women's health and just things that will be pertinent for you to know. So if you are able to attend, please make sure that you check out the Inglewood Library this Friday at 6:30 PM. It'll be a great discussion, great information going forward and things that you will definitely be able to utilize. And for more information, please reach out to the Inglewood Library at 205-849-8739. Lastly, so this past Wednesday, we had the opportunity to celebrate the birthday of the late, great Malcolm X. For those of you who know about him, you've probably seen the Spike Lee joint, the movie that, you know, he came out with in the, in the 90s. But if you have not read the story, I would encourage you to go over to the Birmingham Public Library, check out the book, read the story. It's a, it's a good read, a long read, but something that is definitely entertaining, informational, and inspiring. So just want to encourage you all to check that out. And that is the end of the D4 announcements for this week. Thank you all and have a great week.
We're down here at the new 20th Street that are also known as the Birmingham Green. It has just undergone a $6 million refresh.
Hi, everyone. This is Crystal Smithman, President Pro Tem. We're out here on, it's a great Friday evening. We're out here with Red Birmingham and the World Games and the Birmingham community. We're celebrating the reopening of this cleaning street. We're celebrating the reopening of this cleaning street.
And with Rev, really makes us move forward toward that vision. So on behalf of the board and the downtown property owners, thank you to everyone who helped make this happen.
We're having a big party today to launch the reopening of 20th Street. So tons of people down here having fun, enjoying the beautiful day.
So we had new sidewalks, new streets, new nae of plants up there on the sides. I mean, just renovating the downtown right before the World Games in July. So this is a great time for progress and celebration. And my favorite part was popping the confettis.
So when you hear the pop, don't be scared. That's the sound of progress.
Make sure you buy your tickets for the World Game and make sure you sign up the bombs here.
You guys come down here and check it out. It's awesome.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
District 9, this is Councilor Latonya A. Tate, out here with my chief of staff, Mr. Brendan McCray. Our field coordinator, Mr. Dara Allen. We are in the historical, beautiful Hooper City neighborhood along with many of the constituents. And we are just spreading abroad, cleaning up the neighborhood. So we are continuing our Be Litter Free effort. And we are making sure that we, you know, keep environment safe, healthy, and clean and really trying to get more people involved. This is an awesome opportunity to clean up the neighborhood and the community that we all love very much. And we want to take pride in it and we want to take ownership and make sure that we increase the value and the beautification of the area.
We're just enjoying ourselves. It's hot, but it has to be done.
Hooper City neighborhood, we're spreading out in Hooper City and in Cypico Finley. And so we are grateful to be here.
All the way down Daniel Payne Drive as well as Tracks Drive, which is part of Hooper City, it leads to the county. But sometimes people are not aware, just one piece of paper is like 50. I would tell anyone, listen, you have a garbage can. Put your paper in your pocket, even if it's chewing gum. We must take care of neighborhood, but if our children see us not littering, they will learn to be good stewards of what God has given us.
We want to say, be litter free.
Community effort.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Hey, how you guys doing? I'm Coach L, owner of Step by Step Sports Training and the CEO of Step by Step Foundation. I'm coming here today to talk to you guys about the Magic City Showcase.
I am Trey Chaney of I Am Love Fitness Training, partnered up with Coach L at Step by Step. And once again, we are bringing you guys the Magic City Showcase.
Really wanted to just create this opportunity to make sure athletes didn't get overlooked here in Birmingham. We want to make sure that our local student athletes have access to every opportunity that we can afford them.
Last year was a great event. We had over 400 kids show up. And out of those 400 kids, we had 191 of those kids actually sign collegiate scholarships.
Really excited about 2022 and basically giving some more room for this event to grow with Step by Step Sports Foundation. And I Am Love really stepping up this year to kind of take this to bigger and better places.
It's June 25th. It is going down again.
Boy, I'm excited.
Yeah, so what was cool that just happened was one of the kids that actually attended the camp last year, Jeremiah Beeman at Parker High School, he's now ranked a four-star athlete in the state. He also just got a call from Coach Jimmy Brumbar at Auburn. He gave me a call and told me he wanted to extend the offer to Jeremiah. So I'm very excited for him and I'm very excited to see a lot of other kids who attended the camp last year and who will attend the camp this year, be able to continue to flourish within the city.
The 40-yard dash, the broad jump, the high jump, bench press. We even threw in some long toss on football. We even had some guys that raced. It's going to be a great event this year. We want more kids to come out.
Me and Trey have been getting buzz all year since last year about it.
Bring your A-game. Not the B-game, we're the C-game. Bring your A-game.
Just looking forward to it. So registration is very easy and so we had a very smooth registration process last year. And so we're going to open that up the last we can make. And so we want all student athletes, like I said, we want to make sure that nobody gets overlooked and everybody with the talent to play at that next level gets that opportunity.
So come out, June 25th. Hit us up. Magic City Showcase, let's do it.